And welcome to the July 27th Columbus City Council meeting. We appreciate y'all being here to observe the council doing the city's business. We're going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that is by invoking God's presence on this place. And I'd like to invite to the microphone Reverend Thad Heygood from St. Luke Church. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Almighty God, we do indeed pause in the busyness of our day to acknowledge you. You are a God of all creation, and you are the God of this city. We want to be a city who honors you in every way, and so we come before you tonight to lift up this city and its leaders. Your word tells us that if we will humble ourselves before you, you will guide us and direct our steps, so we bow humbly before you tonight. I thank you for Mayor Henderson and for these city council members. Thank you for their willingness to give of their time and their abilities to serve our great community. And as they do this, God, remind them continually that you are ultimately in control, and that if we will seek you first, great things will be accomplished. We ask you for blessings over this meeting. May your Holy Spirit guide all that is said and done, and may the decisions made here tonight be pleasing to you. May our lives be a living testament to you always. And we pray this prayer in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Reverend Heygood, thank you so much for this evening, and belatedly, we welcome you to your stewardship over St. Luke. We look forward to all the good works that I know will come from that church, continue to come from that church. Thank you, sir. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, councilors, you should have received the minutes. If there are no edits, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion second to approve the minutes. Any edits, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, they are approved. Very quickly, give you an update on COVID. It's frankly not the update I had planned on giving. We had been monitoring our numbers as we do every day, and I think everybody is very well aware, particularly if they've watched national news and local news, that we've seen a fourth surge. And to give you some context, we, first part of July, we had about, I think we had about 40 new cases on that rolling average that we watched, which is the per 100,000 individuals over a two-week period. We're now at 167. We had about 20 patients who were diagnosed with COVID that were in our hospitals, and now we're at, I think we're at 62. So COVID is still real. The strains that have mutated and the different strains that have come out have proven to be a little bit more infectious. And I will urge you all again to carefully consider the science behind the vaccinations. We have a weapon now. We didn't have a weapon back in August when we had the mask mandate. The only weapon we had was our socially distancing, our washing our hands, and wearing a mask. Now we've got a weapon. We have a tool. We have the tool that will help keep our people healthy. Now, listen, if you've got some underlying condition, in fact, I think everybody should consult their doctor if you have any hesitancy at all, and they'll tell you if you have some type of ongoing condition that perhaps you should not get the vaccine. But the vast majority of those are perfectly fine taking the vaccination. And that is what's going to get us back to a normal environment. In Savannah, they have reinstituted the mandate for mask-wearing indoors. We have not done that and don't have any immediate plans to do that. But as we indicated last year when we put it in force in August, we are willing to do what we have to do to try to maintain a safe environment for our residents. The big difference in my mind is that we have an option in the vaccine. So this is going to be with us for a while, so I would urge you to continue to do the things we did a year and a half ago, and that's wash your hands, try to keep socially distanced where possible. Where not possible, wear a mask. If you have not been vaccinated, you shouldn't be wearing a mask. CDC has indicated that. So anyway, that's a little bit of an update. Now, before I move on to the city attorney's agenda, I'm going to do something a little not on the agenda. We have some department heads here tonight. I want to ask all of our department heads to gather at the podium, please. Mr. City Manager, they're under your leadership, so if you would indulge me and take a spot down there with your folks. Yeah, we just gave a quick update on COVID, and man, I'll tell you what, by any account and any measure, this has been one crazy and difficult year, particularly when it comes to delivering services to the citizens. The individuals you see, our department heads, have done an outstanding job in trying to not only take care of the citizens, but also taking care of the people that work for them. And good leaders like these only happen when you have good leadership at the top. And our city manager, Isaiah Hughley, deserves a lot of the credit for the way these 3,000 employees have been able to continue to stay healthy and stay at work. We've always known he's a Hall of Fame-type of guy. At the Georgia Municipal Association meeting that will be held, the conference that will be held the second week of August, our city manager of 16 years and government employee of something over 30, won't give you age away, will be formally inducted by the Georgia Municipal Association into the municipal government Hall of Fame. Mr. City Manager, I can't wait till you get to the podium because I've never seen you at a loss for words. By the way, you were nominated by your staff, by deputy city managers.
Well, again, I will say, wow. I asked Tia Shu just a second ago, when you asked me to come to the podium or join them, I asked her, what is this about? And she says, just go to the podium. Mayor, let me, and to the members of council, let me just say that I am again surprised. But I will say that it is an honor to receive such an honor from the Georgia Municipal Association, an association that works with more than 538 cities across the state of Georgia. For them to honor me in such a way, I don't know the correct words to say, but I will say to you, Mayor, and to the members of council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to work in my city, a city that I love so much. I want only the best for this city and for the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. And I have been blessed to be city manager in the best city that I know for more than 16 years, and I have been blessed to work for a city that's better than any city that I know. October 1st will be 37 years. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity to work for the city that I love so much. And the people standing behind me are the people who get the job done, who have worked so hard because they love the city, to make the city the best it can be. And so to each of them, I say to you, thank you for working with me and tolerating me as you do, because as I know that there are big demands from the mayor and council, because you get big demands from your constituents, the citizens of Columbus, yeah, I press them for performance, accountability, for service, and for trust. And as long as I'm city manager, I will continue to work to take care of the city that I love so much. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the surprise and for the opportunity, and thank you to each of you.
Congratulations, sir. Honor well deserved. Take your seat. You've got work to do tonight. That is an incredible honor. There aren't many folks that qualify or would even be considered for that honor. Counselor Garrett?
Well, hang on.
Okay, here, I'm on now. Well, first of all, Mr. City Manager, it's an honor and privilege to serve with you. This is such a well-deserved honor. I got on council in 2016, and you've been the one constant. And I've seen us trend up from restaurants down down to our reserve fund when I started in 2016. And, I mean, there have been times where you've taken my calls on your cell on the weekends, and you'll text me back, and you personally handle things. I mean, you are a true servant leader. You don't just delegate. You get in the trenches and get the job done. I also did want to take a point of personal privilege. Last night, my wife and I had a little adventure. We were on our way downtown, and a friend had a stolen Land Cruiser. My wife decided she wanted to play detective, so she was looking for it, and we found it, and we called CPD and called the sheriff, and they were able to retrieve it. And the two deputies that I want to particularly commend, Kimbrough in the sheriff's office, and also Golden, those two deputies came out, locked in the vehicle, then CPD got there, and they got the vehicle. So hopefully, we'll be able to apprehend the suspect. We got a good picture of him, but we had just a little fun. But I just want to commend the city manager. I want to commend the leadership of this city, and I commend both the sheriffs and the police department on their work together. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Yeah, I tell you, the police department and the sheriff's department both do an incredible job. And it's tough to locate a stolen vehicle. And the fact that it was able to be found relatively quickly is testimony to not only the community that got actively engaged, but also the individuals that responded to the call. Thank you, counselor. All right, next up, we'll go to the city attorneys. All right, we're having some problems here. Let's try this.
All right.
There we go.
Again, Mr. City Manager, that's a well-deserved honor. I think I've got you by one year on time, but I've watched you working hard the whole time. But congratulations. Mayor, I'm going to call up and add on from the last meeting. It was a special exception. The applicant wasn't able to be here. Mr. Earl Adams here. Okay, this was a special exception for a car sales lot, auto sales in excess of a half acre, 3072 Victory Drive. It's recommended for approval. It's a resolution you can approve at this time. Any questions around the table or in the audience?
All right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion approved from Counselor Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, sir, that's approved.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, that has been approved. Thank you for being here. All right, Mayor, our regularly scheduled item is a vote at Zero Whittles Road. This is the residential office, general commercial, out near Columbus Park. It's recommended for approval. Ready for a vote?
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion to this item? Hearing none, we'll try to vote electronically. Counselors, please register your votes. All right, yours is not working?
Oh, there. Push to the right and left.
All right, it registered. All right, that's approved.
Okay. Next item up is 2458 Martha's Loop. This is the...
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, please clear the board, and y'all register your votes. All right, that's approved.
All right, Mr. Matthews, that is approved. The third item, I'm going to call up Mr. Ryan Pruitt, our building inspector, may have a possible amendment to the demolition ordinance, at least one. And then we've got another person in the audience on number 12 that wants to be heard, but we'll take up Mr. Pruitt first.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Good evening, Mayor and council. I do have an update on some of the properties that came before you two weeks ago. I have some updated pictures. The request is to remove 220 Kelly Avenue from the list. The homeowners have completed the repairs to my satisfaction. The structure's in good shape, and they've actually started working on the inside as well. So that is the request that I am making this evening.
Okay, there's a motion to remove that property from the list and a second.
That is 220 Kelly Avenue.
220 Kelly Avenue. Our motion second to remove from the list. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it is removed.
All right. Now, I know we've got Mr. Saunders here in the audience, but we need a motion from a counselor if we want...
Motion second to approve. Hearing Mr. Saunders, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We own the land at 6800 Macon Road, and we're in the throes of getting it cleaned up this past week as we've come. And we'd like to get a two-month extension because we're maybe trying to get some security storage and maybe some good things on the front, on the Macon Road.
Okay, Ryan, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to clarify. I believe it's 6800 Macon Road. That's the property that they're referring to. On the package you got...
Trying to find it.
It's the fourth-to-last property that's shown on there. Just a little background. It's been a case of ours since 2017, is when the demolition hearing was held. And so we haven't seen really any action taken on the property to date.
You need to step into the microphone.
This is Mr. Cameron Saunders, attorney. Talk in there, and they can hear you.
Let me know if you cannot hear me, but Cameron Saunders, attorney for Albury Properties.
Can everybody hear me now?
I think so. Cameron Saunders, attorney for Albury Properties. And we do have a previous invoice for where action has been taken to clean up the property previously in 2019. So we're coming here today to request an extension so that we can work with Mr. Pruitt and see about cleaning up this property and making sure that it's to the satisfaction of Mr. Pruitt and to the council. But we do think that giving us a little bit of extra time would help facilitate, get us to that point.
Are you trying to fix it up? Are you tearing it down or demolish it yourself?
Well, we want to prepare the property so that we can, whether there are potential purchasers to deal with. So from the owners, they'd be able to figure that out. But at this time, just dealing with the piece and making sure that with the structures that are on there, I think gaining clarification from Mr. Pruitt, the inspections and code department.
All right, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Saunders, do you by chance have a contractor? That's one of the questions we usually ask, to help you get this cleaned up? And you think in a two-month time period, you will be able to accomplish that?
Yes, ma'am. I think so. And our contractor is Tommy Hinton, local. My contractor is Tommy Hinton, a local contractor.
Then I would move that we give Mr. Saunders a two-month extension on the demolition of this property.
Okay, I think Counselor Garrett had already done that, but that'll serve as a second. We've got a few more councilors that want to speak.
All right, I second it then.
Okay, Counselor Huff?
Comparing this to all the other properties and everything and what you've seen, are we in good shape?
I mean, it's, you know, you can see from the picture, it is an overgrown, dilapidated structure. It is relatively secluded on Macon Road compared to other structures that we deal with. My thoughts on it are, you know, if it is taken off the list, or if it's taken off the list completely, then it takes, you know, really three months to get back to this point because I have to resend the notifications, and we've got to go through first and second here, you know, the hearings again.
So you're comfortable that what you've seen, they can get it done in two months?
Yeah, I believe they could get it done in two months. But, you know, my preference would be to approve it, and I can work administratively with them to get it cleaned up within that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I would like those to be a little bit more consistent because we had people that came two weeks ago, and we only gave them two weeks in order for them to get their property up to standard, and they did it. And this property's been on, what, since 2017, Mr. Pruitt? Is that what I understood correctly?
Yes, ma'am. That's when our case first started.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to support it because I want to be consistent. Our constituents are always complaining about, you know, these homes not being taken care of in their neighborhood, and they're tired of it. And we all get those calls all the time. It was since 2017. You said some work was done in 2019, and prior to now, it was our first reading two weeks ago. We could have gave you the exact same thing that we gave the property on Kelly Street. So for me, as far as I'm concerned, you know, it stays on the list. Now, if they finish before the demolition gets there, then, Mr. Pruitt, it's up to your responsibility to come to us right away and say, we're taking this one off the list because they didn't need it. But I apologize, but we need to stay consistent. The opportunity wasn't first reading. It didn't help it. And if I was the owner of Kelly's property, I would be upset. You gave me two weeks, and you're going to give this individual two months? I don't think that's fair. And that's just my personal opinion, and I apologize. And I also want to tell you, whenever we give someone an extension, we want to be very clear that if you tell us two months, and you haven't done it in two months, and we tear the property, you lost that money. We're not going to reimburse you. That's lost on your part. So I would suggest, well, you might have enough votes, but you're not...I apologize, but I'm not going to support it. But I would suggest that you get to that property right away and work with Mr. Pruitt to make sure. Because I hate for you to do get a two-month extension. You don't get it done, we're going to tear it down, and you lost your money. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I do agree with Counselor Woodson about being consistent. And it's such a close time period that just recently, we did allow just two weeks. And what I recommend is what Ryan Pruitt just asked you to do, and that is leave it on the list, and then let him work with them administratively. And I think perhaps going forward, to be consistent, if we see that there's an opportunity to save a property, we should leave it on the list, and then let Ryan Pruitt work with them administratively. And in some cases, working with them administratively might mean for one property, it's two weeks, and another is three weeks. We don't know. It could be the rain, like pop-up showers. It could be...But at least give him that discretion, leave it on the list, and then let him work with them administratively. And he will consider all things, like if it's raining every day, it may not be an opportunity to do it in two weeks. And he may say, well, I'm going to do three weeks or 30 days, but it's his discretion.
I agree. Counselor Tucker?
Being that this property is in my district, I actually...
We hit it. It's just not...
Okay, so now, I agree with you also, City Manager, and Mr. Pruitt. With this being in my district, I do see this as blight, and you had an opportunity to come speak on first read, and this is second read. So right now, really, we shouldn't be entertaining this because you had an opportunity to speak on first read. So I would suggest that we let Mr. Pruitt keep this on the list. And if they can get this property done before it comes up to demo, then we can take it off. But other than that, I think we need to keep it on the list.
Well, I think it also gives Mr. Pruitt the discretion, as the city manager pointed out. As long as we're seeing speedy, regular improvement towards getting it done, and then if there are some uncertain circumstances, whether it's weather or some of the other unplanned conditions, then Mr. Pruitt can exercise his judgment. I do think it's important, as Counselor Woodson stated, that typically, and we're going to see more of these instances because we've become very aggressive now on tearing down single-family residents, but I think it's important, and I know Mr. Saunders said he's got a contractor, typically, council has asked for, you know, some kind of letter from a contractor, proof of funds, and a timeline. And I don't think Mr. Saunders will have any problem getting all that, but that is kind of being consistent. And I think what we did with, we need to check the minutes, but I think we gave him two weeks to make some substantial changes in the eyes, we basically did the same thing, in the eyes of our director. So Counselor Crabbe?
What's the parliamentary procedure if we wanted to change this motion? Because isn't there a motion on the table?
It would have to be withdrawn.
That we would withdraw that?
Counselor Garrett has said he'll withdraw that motion. So...
Okay.
So, well, there's no need to vote. If we're going to let him handle it administratively. Yeah. Counselor Davis? Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. Let me, let me just say, the goal, what's trying to be accomplished is to get these properties up to standard, to get them in good shape, and it's good for the community, it's good for the property owners, it's just a win-win all the way around. It's unfortunate that the city gets placed in these situations. What we tend to do, and we've always done this, and I personally have put a lot of faith and confidence and trust in our City Manager over the years, and he'll tell you that. He has always been fair and just and equal with everybody that I know that's come through. And he always wants a plan, okay? And when we give extensions, usually it's to put a plan together, but you got to follow through with that plan under his discretion, in which you just said, he just passed down, as he said earlier, a lot of confidence in, in his director. But, the City Manager has always managed these, it's always been his goal to get progress on these properties, and when he sees that it's not, it's coming down. And that's what we've always done. And I didn't say anything the last council session that we've talked about, but when we give people extensions, we are really looking for a plan. And that plan, like the mayor said, encompasses several factors. And you just said that you, you have a contractor and, you know, I, I, I think your word is good, I think is gold because your reputation supersedes yourself, so I, I have a lot of confidence that it's going to get done. But, I will also say that I'm in the camp that if there's not progress, you know, and it's not done, you got to show me, you can't tell me, then I support the City Manager's decision 100% and the Director because that's the way we've done it for each and every person in this community. And I want to remain consistent as well. Usually, if these properties come down, people will come and they will tell you a lot of things, they'll put stuff together, but it doesn't, it just doesn't happen. And that's usually when the city acts. And, you know, it's hard to get that message across. The city just doesn't sit there with a big sledgehammer. They actually give people the opportunity to get it right, and usually it's over a long period of time, so somebody, anybody can't say that they haven't had enough time to, to correct a matter. But, City Manager has always treated everybody equal and fair and, and I for one would support that motion, that I believe you have a plan, I believe you said you're going to get it done, you're going to move forward, but they're going to keep an eye on it and, and I think that, you know, if, it's, it's up to the, it's up to the property owner to, to follow through. So, I'm willing to give you that opportunity and I'm willing to give the City Manager and the Director the opportunity to, to use the discretion that they need to as well to, to, to follow through with it.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Saunders, we have, they've withdrawn the motion, so you'll need to work directly with Mr. Pruitt and meet whatever guidelines he works out for you to try to hit. And of course, it's still on the list, so in the event that you don't hit one of those benchmarks, it will just be scheduled for demolition.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mayor, with the amendment to remove 220 Kelly Avenue, the ordinance is ready for a vote.
All right, there's a motion to approve. There was a second in there as well. Any further discussion? If you would, please cue the vote and counselors, if you would, register your votes, please. Whoa, a second. There we go. Register them now, please. There it goes. It's approved.
All right. Next item up is the second reading of the FY22 budget amendment to provide a fee waiver to residential households for one-month solid waste collection fee.
All right, is the motion approved from Counselor Davis?
Second.
Was there a second from Counselor Garrett? Any discussion to this motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. But, I'm sorry, you can register your votes, I forget. Forget we're in high-tech now. Okay, that passes?
Passes. All right, and then I'm going to call up Mr. Ed Wolverton from Uptown on this next ordinance. Mayor, this is asking for amendment to the plan for the Business Improvement District.
Hang on, we've got Counselor Woodson that has, I'm sorry, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it just, that vote just went like so quickly and I wanted to express my concern and the reason why I was voting against it and Counselor Tucker had some questions, but it went so fast that we didn't get that opportunity to talk. My reason for voting against it is that because of where we are right now, where we have to get an outside, outsiders to come in to help us to pick up the trash, do all that, the money, the $1 million point five is going to affect the landfill and it's just a one-time. The dollar amount was $18 per household and not all households. And I had some big concerns about that because even though we are financially okay right now, we don't know what tomorrow holds and the requirements that we have with the landfill and, and if we can't hire individuals because of the pay that we do. I know several of us got an email requesting that we raise to pay for the drivers at least $15 so that we won't have to use an outside firm. And so, that is my reason for, because I, why it does benefit our citizens, even myself, it would have benefited me. $18 is a gallon of milk, bread and butter, but I looked at it, at the bigger picture of what expenses we're going to have for the landfill. And if we can't hire individuals to work for this government to pick up the trash, we're going to have to find another $1.5 million for another year. Because if we don't, the citizens are going to come back and say, "Our government has not done its job." So, I just wanted to make it very clear that everyone understands. It wasn't that I didn't want to give it to the citizens, I'm looking at the future, what's going to happen later and what, where we're going to get the money later to take care of the problem.
That's, that's a good point. In fact, I think you're going to hear when we get to a briefing on the yard waste, you're going to hear that we are obligating more funds to try to, try to handle the bulk green waste and the bulk furniture stuff. So, you'll see there's even more money that has been committed. Counselor Thomas?
And that was my whole reason for voting now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as the Budget Chair, I just wanted to remind counsel that this $18 waiver will cost the city about $1 million and it will come out of the Integrated Waste Fund. It will not come out of the general fund. And when, this was discussed at the last council meeting, the Public Works Director said that one of the issues was the amount of money that we would need to close a landfill, or the two landfills. And he said that we have no plans to do that for 25 years. I believe we can come up with $1 million to do this and to take care of it. $18 for a lot of our citizens is not a lot of money. For some, it's a whole lot of money. For others, it's not. But, what this, I hope, says to our community is that we understand that we have been having problems in the area of waste, yard waste, and we're going to do what we, what we, and this is just a gesture, quite frankly, to say, we know this doesn't solve all of these problems, but we do know that we need to do something to tell our citizens, you have been heard, you continue to be heard, don't stop talking to us, we want to know what's going on. And that's why, as the Budget Chair, I voted in favor of this motion.
Okay, Counselor Garrett.
Like, as Mayor Budget Chair, I feel the same way. This, this is money that hurts, but it comes from the Integrated Waste Fund, not our general funds. And we have a compact with our citizens, provide them with services, and I know that we have done, and our Director of Public Services has done everything in his power to provide that service, they really have, and we just haven't had the available labor. But, Counselor Woodson did raise a point that, just for, I think, final purposes, I would like to amend this motion to exclude elected officials. And I'll take everybody to lunch, buy you the $18, but I just don't want us voting on something that could possibly benefit ourselves, so I would like to make a motion that this, this ordinance exclude the elected officials, local elected officials.
All right, there's a motion second. The only question I would have would be about the technology capability of doing that.
Yeah, Mayor, I think it'd be better if you leave the ordinance alone and then if the elected official...
Just write a check.
I'll just write a check then.
Yeah, wants to donate the $18, they can.
We'll do that. All right, so that motion's withdrawn. All right.
Any more, any more discussion?
No.
All right, we'll call the next ordinance on, this is a request of the Uptown Columbus Bid so that they can fund certain projects and sponsor events. Mr. Ed Wolverton is here from Uptown Columbus Bid and he wants to make a few comments and we'll see if there are questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. I'm sorry about the pause as you were getting up there.
No worries. Thank you, good evening. I'm Ed Wolverton with the Uptown Business Improvement District at tonight. So, on behalf of our Board of Directors, we're here asking for your consideration of expanding the allocations of some of our bid management plan to allow some additional activities. I will point out that Leah Braxton, our Chair of the Business Improvement District, is here, and also Deputy Manager Pam Hodg serves as an ex-officio member of this body. So, the amendment tonight is to allow the management plan to change a little bit. It would be funding for special events, allocating some funds for potential streetlight improvements, and also some potential funding for landscape improvements. The bid management plan was actually approved in 2014. Tonight is really looking at just some minor modifications to that plan, and I do want to point out that the assessment rates within the bid would remain unchanged. The state allow, the state law does allow these activities. They were left out of the bid plan from 2014, really because of other priorities, but as we all know, things have changed a lot in the last few years and especially the last year and a half. So, as these conditions changed, our bid team has looked at some potential opportunities to address and that's brought us here tonight. I will also point out that the Clean and Safe Services that are really the core values of our Business Improvement District will remain unchanged. These will just be adding some additional things to the template of what we provide. The special events themselves will help with economic development efforts as well as our marketing programs. The lighting will enhance public safety and landscaping will help with economic development and our public space management tasks. So, with that, I can stop and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Don't, don't see any questions. We're excited about what's going on at Uptown and we thank the bid as well as Uptown Association for all that you do to try to continue to make it a great place to visit. And you may want to mention it's also Restaurant Week.
Yes, it is, so please come on down and enjoy some outdoor dining or some indoor dining.
Very good.
All right, we're ready for a motion on this ordinance.
Okay, is there...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's first reading.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll bring it back in two weeks, Mr. Wolverton, for a vote at the regular council meeting. All right, Mayor, the only other item we would request is a very short executive session on some litigation, and that's all we had listed.
Okay. All right, we'll move into the public agenda, and as always with the public agenda, you'll, you'll have five minutes and you'll be warned, I think, when the timer is just about up. If some, for some reason, you can't get through your comments in five minutes, you'll have an option to come back at the end of the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes. And I won't, we won't start the timer until you give us your name and your, your address. First on public agenda is Dr. Rocky Marsh, representing, or speaking to the inability to request a venue through Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for taking the time. I also want to thank Marvin Broadwater.
If you would, just state your name and your address.
I'm sorry, Dr. Rocky Marsh, 8016 Imperial Court, Columbus, Georgia, 31904.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for taking time. I hear my, my hero called, I want to thank Marvin Broadwater for also standing by. Very simply, I have provided you a readout that you can follow along with, with my argument today. In short, I've come to simply ask for the state of the football field at Shirley B. Winston Park. In the past, I have reserved this park on many occasions for different types of events, all community events, but my most recent event, which was scheduled for October the 9th, which was totally open to the public event, family-oriented, I was denied this particular request due to organized sports on the football field. Okay, I would not even appear here today except for the fact that I had began this request process back in March and April and was told often and often that the field itself was unserviceable for organized sports. My original request went back in March. In the interest of time, your readouts provide a very detailed timeline of all my correspondence back and forth for various reasons. My original packet included the liability waiver, liability policy, excuse me, a COVID waiver, the Parks and Rec, the police permit for gathering, all sent, all received, reviewed, revised, and even resent, once I had to revise the city police permits. But, never during this time was I given a reason about organized sports on the football field. So, before, before appearing at council today, I enlisted the aid of the City Counselor whose district this, the park falls into. So, I want to take this time to thank Counselor Tucker for indulging in my many phone calls and emails to try to resolve the issue. Actually, it seemed that the issue might be resolved and I had a scheduled meeting with the Deputy City Manager's Office to further outline my plan, look at the, all the possible safety hazards, and it looked like the plan would work so because everything looked at it in, in positive, the meeting was canceled because it did not seem necessary. I was able to speak with Counsel Tucker once again, and again, it appeared that there would be no issues in, in this request and, excuse me, so that, but there was one thing that will need to be revised in the packet. She advised me that I specifically need to outline the use of the football field in my packet, which I did, which I did resent, resend. It wasn't until I sent an email for an update of the request in June that I finally received an update, excuse me, a response stating that the field, or my request could not be filled due to organized sports on the same football field that I had been told months and months and months was unserviceable and not in use. So, if the field is not available for use because of organized sports, I could not have been informed of that, of any immediate submission. I would not even took any time. But, if in the same, if the field is unserviceable, how can I be denied the request to use the field for organized sports activity? Now, no many might come before council with problems, I came with solutions, I included it on my document. One of which was if a citizen requests a particular facility and that facility could not be accommodated, that the citizen be at least offered an alternate facility that might accommodate their date and all of their activities. I was not given that opportunity and this particular remedy is actually included in the Parks and Rec pamphlet that's available online. So, I wish I had been given the opportunity for another facility well in advance that would have prevented my appearance today. Excuse me, sorry. So, in closing, I want to thank the council for taking the time to listen. I stand by, I'll listen for any questions.
Thank you, Doctor. Any questions of council? Mr. City Manager, did you? And Dr. Marsh, I tell you, I have, it sounds rude, but, but your five minutes are up, so unless they have a direct question of you, then you, you are not permitted to add any more comments.
Roger.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Let me just say that, and I am going to call on the Director. I think Mr. Marsh knows me and I know Mr. Broadwater knows me, and I know that you know that I'm the City Manager. And I know you have my... And I know you have my number in your cell phone. Did you call me? Did you call me?
I did not.
Why are we here at city council when, I mean, I don't know the situation, but I can assure you, had you called me, we would have had a meeting. And so I'm interested in hearing from staff why or why not. But I have an open door. I want you to know that. And he's wearing an Omega Shield. I know that he knows he could have called me. And so, Mr. Mayor, I do want to hear from the staff.
All right.
But it seems you talked to several people, and you talked to council members, but you didn't talk to me. And so I wish I could have had an opportunity to work with you.
Be glad to next time.
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like for Holly Browder.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and say, based on the city manager's statement, that's why I've been so quiet. Brother Broadwater wears the Omega Shield. I wear the same Alpha Shield as you. Hadn't heard a word over the last ten years. I've been to the city manager twice on situations like this, and he's worked through them. So I don't know what happened. I saw it on the agenda at that late date. I knew I was not involved in it at that point. So I just wanted to say to you, please reach out if I can ever help you.
Be glad to.
Mr. Mayor, I would like for staff...
Yes, Mr. Browder.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. So in regards to what Mr. Marsh has brought up, we have not been as quick this year because of COVID to relinquish or to give out usage of our facilities. Obviously, when he originally came to us, we were not booking special events because our numbers as related to COVID. And so we were not doing such things. In regards to the football fields, all of our football fields are closed in the summer months when we do maintenance, and so I'm not sure if that's what's being referred to as uncertified or unsafe. They're not uncertified or unsafe. It's just that we close them for maintenance in the summers. We put up signage to notify the public that we are doing maintenance. That's when we treat them. We put chemicals out. It's the only time that they're not used, and so that's our opportunity to do so. I will say that the reason that he was denied usage is because of Columbus Youth Football. We did approach the league and asked the league, would you be using it on that weekend? I spoke myself to the president of the league, Ms. Ingram, asked for would they be using it, because typically they have not played that weekend in the past. That weekend traditionally for us has been the Tuskegee Morehouse game, which most of our events are otherwise in the city, we don't have as far as youth events. But because that game is not being played here this year, and because they've had a higher than normal registration for their youth, she said they anticipated needing to use the field. And I said, yes, ma'am, our obligation is to you because that's who our agreement is with for the usage of our football field. So that's typically the only reason we would ever say no, is if we have something that supersedes it, that we have to honor, and that's simply the case. At no time would we ever ask, you know, they made it very clear, he made it very clear, that he really wanted to use Shirley Winston. We understand, and we appreciate that, and we would love to accommodate. But we can't do both at the same time, because he's asking for a full day of events, which sounds like a great listing and lineup of things that they want to have, but we just can't have both of them at the same time. The numbers just, there's no way to have both at the same time. And the way the parking lot and all the amenities that he wants to use, we just can't do both. So unfortunately, that was the reason.
So, but, but, Mr. Mayor, let me, and council, let me just say, of course, if I had had the opportunity, obviously, we would have found something. I don't know where. It could be Memorial Stadium. It could be wherever. But I would have had staff work with you, and I understand why it did not happen. But I think with my intervention, we would have found a suitable location for you, and still will. So let's talk.
All right. We got councillor Tucker.
Me.
Tucker.
Thank you, City Manager, and because you said that, from now on, I will reach out to you. What I did do, I was working heavily with the director, Director Browder, Holly, with this process, and I trusted her guidance. And I was speaking to her quite often throughout this process, and also Dr. Rocky Marsh. However, one of the things that we were looking at was the final football schedule. And that's what I don't know, is if the final football schedule is completed, and is that date open? Because that's what we were waiting on, was that final football schedule.
Yes, ma'am, and that's correct. And that's...
And let me just say, councillor, and I understand you're working with Miss Browder.
From now on, I'm gonna call you.
And I think that would have been best. You know, the mayor, when he took office, is, to me, don't find a way not to do something. Find a way to get it done. You know? And so I'm going to challenge my department heads in a different way than you would challenge them. See, I tell them things like, find them a location, and if you don't find it, I'll find it. And then they don't want me to find it. So they go find it. So I just challenge them in a different way.
Well, this is a lesson learned from me, because what should have happened, we should have just kept that meeting on April fifteenth and not cancelled that meeting. So that's a lesson learned on my part. Because honestly, we really thought that we had it locked down, meaning that we were gonna, it was gonna be approved. So that was, why should we meet? Because we're gonna get it approved, and then after, right. So after the time came up, and then football season, you know, started, it was pushed back, and it was, it changed. But the reason why we cancelled that meeting in April, on April, before April fifteenth, was because it was a good indication that it was going to be approved, and we didn't need to meet. Because I would have never told, you know, told him, advised him to, yeah, just cancel. But that was the, on April fourteenth, it was an indication that it would have been approved on that day.
Well, and councillor Thomas is next, but I just want to point out that our department directors do an incredible job in juggling all the different aspects of these fields, especially with COVID being over. But what I will tell you is, just like the city manager told you, they have constraints that they have to operate within in order to make sure that the procedures and the policies are followed and consistent. That's the man that can adjust the policies and procedures. So I think Ms. Browder did what she was supposed to do, along the guidelines of what Parks and Rec does. But if you have a, if you have fishing line needs being untangled, you call the city manager. He'll untangle it. Councillor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, I understand that you have said to us tonight that you will work with Dr. Marsh to find a location for this event, and I appreciate you doing that. I know that that's right up your alley. You accommodate our citizens as much as you can. My concern with this timeline that we have been given is the length of time between, it looks to me in reading this, between contact by Dr. Marsh to the Parks and Rec Department and no response. Even if the response is, I'm still working on it, I would encourage our department heads to do that. Our citizens don't, if they have an issue like this, they don't want to be, you know, twiddling their thumbs, waiting for somebody to call. But there are at least two or three lengthy periods of time on this timeline where there was no response after he had contacted them. So if you would just remind your department heads that, I know they're busy, and I know that sometimes the requests that they get are not their number one priority, but they're that citizens' number one priority. And we need to make sure that we are in contact with them, even if it's to say, I need a few more days.
Well, and Madam Budgets here, and councillor, I appreciate that, and I agree with you on the timeline, but I want to reiterate what the mayor said. That's a very fine department head.
Absolutely.
And I'll put her up against any.
Absolutely.
And, but the timeline is what it is. And typically, the way it works, the department head will say something to a citizen, because they're operating within the policy, the rules, as the mayor has said, or they don't get a response. And they're gonna call one of you, but then you're gonna call me, or email me, or text me, right?
I do have you on speed dial.
And that's when I get engaged, and we get pretty good results. And, you know, it's just that there was a missing piece in this. And, but we'll fix it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Councillor Huff?
Yeah, brother Dr. Marsh. My last comment on this is, they've stated how good our department heads are. So I want to lift her up before she leaves tonight to know that we're not down on her. She does a great job. She follows policy very well. She knows it in and out. She's certified to do what she does. But this is how it all works. You would have worked with director. You have any issues, she will call, you will call, and it lands at the city manager's seat in his office, and we somehow work it out. If it needs to come back to the full council, it does. But my last response is, I see you on a regular basis, or I talk to you from time to time. So when you have someone in your midst, please reach out. Be glad to help. Thank you.
All right. No further comments. Thank you, Ms. Browder. All right, we had a cancellation from Mr. Olson on the public agenda, so we'll move... Yes, councillor Woodson.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I would like a point of privilege, because I would like for this council to consider, and I don't remember exactly how the procedure goes. I think it's the city attorney will send it. I would like to send a request to the honorary board to put Mayor Proten Evelyn Pugh honorary on Forest Row. She worked so many years so hard, and sometimes government is so slow. And finally, you know, she got it done. And during her service, someone had mentioned it, and I thought it was a great idea. So I wanted to bring it forth to see if we can go ahead and send it to the Board of Honor so that we can do an honorary sign on Forest Row for her. And I know how long, you know, sometimes constituents think you're not doing your job, but you are, because it took me almost six years for Brown Avenue Bridge. That's how long it took me. I'm going on my fifth year on South Lumpkin Road. It's taken that long. Sometimes the process, because we have to work with different entities, takes a long time. But that was her pride and joy, and she always fought and fought and fought for Forest Row. Every time we came, she mentioned Forest Row. She did just like me with South Lumpkin Road and Brown Avenue Bridge. So I'm not, I don't remember exactly what the process is, but can we, clerk of council, or city attorney, whoever can handle it, can you please send that request to the Board of Honor? Thank you. I'm trying not to cry. I'm trying to be a big girl.
Yeah, Clerk Davis, the usual procedure. You just refer it to the Board of Honor, right, for a honorary designation of a street?
We need a vote to be able to... Madam Clerk, motion in a second to refer it to the Board of Honor. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Councillor Davis?
Mayor, is the public agenda over?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'd like to, is Ms. Angela Johnson out in the audience? Okay, Ms. Johnson, hang on a minute, hang on. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted you to know, I talked with Ms. Johnson, and I may have been confusing in my conversation to her, and I think she was expecting to be on the public agenda tonight, but that's not protocol, and that's not how it happens. And I think she thought that I was, or anyway, it was a misunderstanding of where she thought councillors would have to sign a citizen up, and maybe I failed to express that. But I would like to ask the council, I know I can't do it here because of protocol and because of the policy of being able to allow her to speak, but maybe, since she's here, so she's gonna spend a lot of time out there, and I know the city manager's gonna have a long agenda, but maybe when the clerk of council's agenda comes up, a point of personal privilege, of course, it would have to be voted on by council to agree if she could express what she came here to talk about. But I'm gonna take the blame that I made the mistake in communicating, and she came, I just want you to know, she came tonight. She's spending a lot of time here, and I just don't want her to go home not being heard. So if it's possible, if that could happen, I know that would be at the will of the council, but I would ask for that on clerk of council's agenda, at the end of the clerk of council's agenda. It's...
And then what you can do, I guess, at the end of the agenda, just make a motion for her to be heard, and then it will be up to council if they will allow it. We typically reserve three minutes at the end of the clerk's office for anybody that didn't finish their comments during the public hearing, so it's...
Well, and I wanted to make sure, you've always been consistent with that with everybody, both at the public agenda and in the meeting, but I believe that the policy is, the citizen has to go and sign up, and from that standpoint, so...
If council approves her to speak, that's fine.
But I'll wait till that. I just wanted to let Ms. Johnson know what's happening, because I know she's here tonight, and I didn't want her to sit there and not understand what's going on.
We'll remind you at the end of the clerk's agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First on my agenda is a topic that, subject that we've been discussing for almost two years now, and that's the special purpose local option sales tax intent for election on November second, 2021. In fact, were it not for the pandemic, in 2020, we were scheduled to bring this for the same vote for an election that would have been held November of 2020. Excuse me. And so we're here tonight, as we've had a number of meetings or presentations for you here at council, and we've had a number of public meetings about special purpose local option sales tax and the possibility of an election for November of 2021. So we're here requesting to call for an election on November second, 2021, for consideration of a special purpose local option sales tax for capital projects totaling $400 million, and authorize the issuance of general obligation sales tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $200 million in connection with the imposition of the special purpose local option sales tax. And so, again, we've had presentations, I think, literally every single council meeting, and we've had public meetings where citizens were able to watch it by CCGTV, YouTube, Facebook. They were able to send in comments online. They were able to call in while those public meetings were being held. And so staff has made sure that citizens have had an opportunity to weigh in. And so we're asking your approval tonight. And what this would mean is simply that it would be on the ballot and the citizens get to decide whether this is something they want to do or not.
All right, Counsel Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I have. Mr. City Manager, I have been in several meetings in the community, particularly some of our social, not our social clubs, our like Rotary and that and Kiwanis and that sort of thing, where our deputy manager, city manager, Ms. Hodge, made a presentation about what this SPOLOX fund would entail. She also made it very clear in every one of those meetings that she was not there to urge that we vote. She was there to urge that we find out what's in the, what's being offered. And I would just say, I think, Mr. City Manager, that if there are other organizations or clubs or, you know, Wednesday night supper at church or whatever, that would like for such a presentation, that they should contact your office and you could probably arrange that for them. It's been very helpful to have her go through and answer questions and make sure that everybody knows what she's talking about. So if there are, if there are other organizations that would like to have that, is, should they call Ms. Hodge or should they call you?
They can call either or, and we will make it happen anywhere, anytime, early, late. And we're not there to ask, as you said, that someone support or not support. We're there to educate, to share with you what's listed and educate you with citizens with answers to questions about what we have done, what we haven't done in their mind and what's on the list and why it might be, we're there to answer questions, anywhere, anytime, any day.
I think one of the questions that that was asked in a couple of the meetings that I was in was, so exactly what is the general obligation sales tax bond? How does that work? Some of those kinds of things that people may not understand just by reading this or this request or whatever. So this November 2nd date is the general election, all right? This is the.
It's a special election.
Yeah, this is.
Let me see, where are you?
It's a special. Yeah, this is actually a special election held in an odd numbered year. But the state law provides that it may be held on November 2nd, 2021.
I'm sorry, I misread it. I thought it said 2022, which is the general election.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was a mis, yes, ma'am. All right, we we've got a motion and a second, motion from Counselor Crabbe, a second from Counselor House. To the motion, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The way I read this is that you're requesting a referendum for council to approve it, that it would be put out, that the citizens would make a decision on this request for a SPOLOX for various items to be constructed and improvements. I still see that there's probably some work in between from here and there that, you know, we've, some of us have asked some questions, get some information, things like that. And and it's not here today and I don't expect it. And I know, you know, it's, it would be inappropriate to 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 discuss that at at this point. But I'm assuming that those things are ongoing and they can still be answered and there's probably going to be some more work. This is just a request to put it on the ballot and allow the citizens to make a decision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Huff?
Yes, Mr. City Manager and Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. Where are we as far as the pools are concerned? I'm getting phone calls on this because in the presentation it says splash pads or pools and they want their swimming pools back now. Or if it's a splash pad along with it, that's fine. But nobody's going to learn how to swim with a splash pad, so they want swimming back in the neighborhood. Yeah, especially it was Shirley Winston, I think Salmon Road and one other, I think, Brigham Park.
Yes, what's included in the SPOLOX would be the renovation or replacement of the three swimming pools with a pool and or splash pad. And that is at the three locations, which would be Shirley Winston, Salmon Road and.
But that's the language I'm getting phone calls on right there.
And I think your clarification, you want, because we said Shirley Winston for a mini splash pad and you said replace pool or?
No, there's renovate or replace three swimming pools with pools and or splash pads. In addition to that, there are mini splash pads included at South Common Civic Center, Carver Park, Liberty District, City Services Center and two additional locations for the mini splash pad.
So the pools are guaranteed?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be, well, it's what, as Counselor Davis said, between now and the and election, you may decide that, you know, it may be a pool or splash, a larger splash pad or a combination of both.
If if a splash pad replaced a swimming pool at one of those locations, it would be a water park.
It'd be in addition to the pool, the splash pad would be included with the pool.
You remember the water park they had, kind of the at St. at Shirley Winston and at Salmon? I think that's along those lines, not just a splash pad.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm trying to drum up support. And they're saying they are all behind it as long as they get a pool back there.
Yes.
So I know in the presentation, we saw the one that you told me about that had the indoor outdoor and all that. So whatever we decide to do, as long as they get a swimming pool.
But pool is on the list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I requested earlier that we put this information on the government website. And I noticed that it is there. But I would like to ask that we do a little bit more prominent placing for that and and make it bigger and maybe add frequently asked questions and give the citizens a place to go to get the answers and in and maybe have a presentation from Pam. I think you have that that link there. But just, I think, adding it in a more prominent placing and then also frequently asked questions.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Was there a vote?
Oh, there wasn't a vote. I'm sorry. There was a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, if you queue it, let them enter their votes, please. All right, it's approved.
And so, Mayor and Council, this next one, property acquisition of properties on 8th Avenue and 9th Avenue. This property, if you're standing in the front door of the Liberty Theater looking across the street, it's that vacant lot with trees on it. And and so this is that property. It's two and a half acres. On the tax document, it shows this property is valued at $103,500. And we had been trying to purchase that property over the years and we could get no reaction from then Lance, now Campbell. And of course, you know, with the situation now, I asked the deputy city manager to go back and see if we can acquire that property. And and they responded promptly. And we offered $25,000 an acre. And they accepted the offer and that would be $70,500.
Motion approved from Counselor Woodson. I heard a second. Who, Counselor Huff, any discussion?
Yes. No. It's that vacant lot with the nice trees and just directly across.
Any further discussion? All right, if you queue the vote, counselors, please enter your votes. Okay, that is approved.
And Mayor, I will say that we're we're not trying to own property. What we try and do is acquire a symbol and promote the property for economic development. Sometimes when there's an economic development opportunity, the property is split and there's so many owners and multiple owners perhaps on a single piece of property. And you got to try and straighten out and contact five different siblings in five different states. And and so we don't want to own it, you know, we just want to make something happen. And so that's all we're doing here. And and so I just want to be clear about that. We're not trying to own property. And so next I've got Dragonfly Connection, River Road, Bradley Park and Lake Oliver Marina.
All right, there's a motion from Counselor Woodson, second from Counselor Tucker to approve. Any discussion? Counselor Crabbe, hang on, I'm getting to you. There we go.
Thank you. Can you go over what the other sources are for financing? It says, and the balance will be provided by other sources.
Sure.
So the portion that the city will be contributing is $283,000. Friends of the Dragonfly Trail and Becca Zajak was here. The rest of the funding, they are looking for private sources to provide that. So that would not be a city source. I know they have been in discussions with GDOT because that is a GDOT right of way for an allocation from GDOT. But at this time, the city's allocation is 283 towards the total project cost.
Ms. Zajak's here. She's incognito.
You answered it perfectly.
All right, any other questions, discussion? All right, please queue the vote. Counselors, you register your votes, please. There you go, it's approved.
Got Columbus Ice Rink donations for United We Play Columbus Urban Hockey Program, asking your approval to.
Motion from Counselor Davis, second from Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue the vote. Counselors, enter your votes, please. All right, it's approved.
Got a memorandum of agreement with Faith Tabanackle Community Church. The Department of Engineering received a request from Faith.
Motion approved from Counselor Tucker, second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue the vote. Counselors, you can register your votes. Never did take. Okay, all right, so we're good. It's approved.
I've got. I've got a lease agreement, 823 8th Avenue.
Motion approved, Counselor Tucker, second from Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? Counselor Thomas, hang on, I'm coming to you.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question. I I read the material in the agenda and you're talking about we're leasing the building Liberty Theater? No, just that vacant lot, right?
That vacant lot, in fact, I believe, yeah, they're here. Why don't you come up? But no, it's a vacant lot.
It's just the vacant lot. We're not, this does not include the the theater itself.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on what we were doing.
That's only if you want to come up. You don't have to. But but it's, no, it's not the building. It's, you're you're good. Okay.
All right, there's a motion and a second. I don't think we've taken the vote. You would queue it? Counselors, enter your vote, please. All right, it's approved.
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to call up Community Reinvestment Director Rob Scott for a very brief presentation on the 2021 to 2025 Consolidated Plan, the 2021 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Rob Scott of Community Reinvestment. And then, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, we will want you to vote to approve proceeding forward. Mr. Rob Scott.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to ask for permission to, authorization to submit the Consolidated Plan, Annual Action Plan, the Fair Housing Study and the NARSA Study to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is a requirement of the funding. Tonight, I have with me Ms. Kimberly Mitchell from Mosaic Community Planning. And she is just going to talk about some of the highlights. And then I'm going to talk about some of the plans that we had to address some of the needs that were identified through this process. And then we'll just leave it in your hands at that point. Okay, Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Kim Mitchell. I'm with, I'm the Associate Planner with Mosaic Community Planning. The firm is out of Atlanta, but my family's from here. I'm currently living here. So I'm going to give you a very brief overview of some of our findings. And then, as Director Scott mentioned, he will come back with the activities recommended. I'm sure you all are already familiar with the Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan. This is your funding application essentially for your CDBG and Home Investment Partnerships funds. I'm sorry, skipping ahead. So just some of our findings, the housing needs that we observed. First and foremost, our affordability. And this affects a lot of your low income, low to moderate income households. They're cost burdened, spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And this disproportionately affects renters as well. So other housing needs that we identified were housing quality, blight removal, as has been discussed already tonight, home repair and rehab programs, as well as rental assistance and utility assistance. Then some of our community development needs that were identified. We conducted a survey that was online. It had 94 responses. And the top three public service needs that were identified were mental, sorry, health and mental health services, substance abuse and crime prevention and childcare. And we also asked about infrastructure facilities and facilities. The top three public infrastructure needs that were identified were high-speed internet access, street and road improvements and sidewalk improvements. And then for the public facilities, the top three needs identified were childcare centers, community centers and homeless centers. We also conducted a fair housing study called the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. This was a study looking at some of the barriers that might be in place that prevent people from having housing choice. I skipped a slide, but we just covered, you know, what is a housing impediment there. And it it specifies that it deals with protected classes. So individuals who have trouble having access to housing based on race, ethnicity, national origin, religion, sex, disability or familial status, which is whether or not they have children in their household. So as the final findings of the study, we identified some impediments and I'll just briefly go through those. So just not having access to employment, not having low labor market engagement or having low incomes restricts your housing choice and access to opportunity. We identified that there was continued need in South Central and East Columbus for neighborhood re, neighborhood investment. We identified that housing quality and conditions also prevent some protected classes from housing, having housing options. Some of your, or a lot of your public housing is concentrated outside of areas of opportunity. So people living in publicly supported housing have to travel to amenities and jobs. There are some insufficient housing options for people with disabilities. And we also found that the city needs enhanced fair housing education and enforcement activities. found that the city needs enhanced fair housing education and enforcement activities. And finally, we conducted a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Study for some areas in South Columbus. So, this is essentially a study, sorry, that targets this particular area, and that targeted study, once approved by HUD, allows Columbus to invest their CDBG funds in that area in a bit more flexible way. There, you can do some more flexible activities, there's less kind of administrative burden, et cetera. So, just some of the over, the high-level findings of the study, 91% of the residents in this area are black, 36% are below the poverty level, and they live at a median income that is less than half of the city as a whole. Also, one-third are unemployed. So, that's a high-level look at the studies that we conducted, and I'm going to turn it over to Director Scott to give you guys the priorities and activities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. So, I'm going to talk to you tonight about some of the, how are we planning to address the needs that were identified through the process that we just talked about. So, one of the first things I'm going to talk about is expansion of affordable housing supply. That is a priority of the Community Reinvestment Department, as well as housing rehabilitation, blight removal, infrastructure and public facility improvements, public services, fair housing, COVID-19 response, and program administration. In terms of the Community Reinvestment Department fair housing goals, we are looking to establish a dedicated page on the city's website with information about fair housing. We're looking to develop community education around the concept of affordable housing and its value to our community, and give priority consideration to new affordable housing developments in areas of opportunity, as well as to continue to develop the rental rehabilitation program that incentivizes landlords to keep their properties in good repair, and to support programs that assist people with disabilities with the cost of accessibility modifications to their homes. In terms of the NARSA goals, we want to support neighborhood revitalization, clean up and beautify blighted commercial areas. We're looking to encourage commercial infill and mixed-use development. We're also seeking to launch adult education initiatives for individuals who did not complete high school, as well as promote access for those who wish to complete post-secondary certification in education, work to ensure residents have the skills and connections needed to obtain employment with living wages. We're also seeking to host workshops that promote life skills for the households, things such as tenants' rights, credit counseling, which will include case management, as well as other supportive services that lead to our upward mobility and an improved quality of life, support the development of high-quality affordable for rent and for sale housing, provide rehabilitation to existing single-family housing for affordable homeownership for those who are owner-occupied, improve recreational facilities in those areas that have, are designated as low-to-moderate income census tracts. So, our plans are broad, but our action plan is specific, and this work will guide our activities over the next five years, and we're posturing to meet some of those needs, and we just need your help to send the plan to HUD.
Motion approved from Counsel Woodson, second from Counsel Tucker. To the motion, Counsel Davis.
To the motion. Director, thank you for the presentation. The Counselor Garrett and I were just kind of talking a little bit, and I know this is a plan that's got to be submitted and approved and submitted, but it, it still, your department still works throughout the community, in all areas of the community, and we were just talking about, you know, and, you know, a lot of people get the, it's kind of misunderstood. The district I represent is a very diverse district. You have all kinds of, a little bit of everything, okay? But we have a lot of low-income housing areas that need improvements throughout the area, and when they read this, that does not, that's still, the way that your department still provides opportunities and allows them to have assistance too, if they meet these qualifications. But at the same time, this plan kind of, I guess, more or less targets areas, but that does not. I just wanted to make sure on the record that doesn't exclude all these other areas that we have pockets and places around that also they need help as well, that we're trying, our community's trying to provide. And I know your department worked diligently on that, but I just want to make sure that when somebody's watching this, that they understand that as a whole, and not, this is not just dealing with a, you know, a segment, and that's it, but that the city has a broader plan, a broader outreach, but this is a plan that has to be submitted to, I guess, further up, and that's where we're at today. But really, I think we do this every, the City Manager, this is pretty standard, every five years we do it, and the departments have done, Department of Community Reinvestment has done a good job in working in these areas, but a lot of work to do, and sometimes it seems like it's never-ending, but we do it, we do it well, we've got a lot of good partners out there, and appreciate all you guys and your department and all they're doing to help assist all the citizens of Columbus.
Yes, all the citizens, you are correct, sir. Thank you.
Counsel Hough?
Director Scott, thank you so much. And Mosaic Planning, what was her name?
Kimberly Mitchell.
Kimberly Mitchell, thank you, Ms. Mitchell, for being here. I've spent a lot of time with Director Scott since he arrived. We met over a Microsoft Team confirmation of a new director, and he hit the ground running, and we ran into each other one day and just started talking. To Counsel Davis' point, they're still working with everyone, but for some of us, Counsel Woodson, I'm sure, and Tuck and Pops, you know, on the South Side, we have a majority of poverty and less opportunities, as I would say. So, in reading through some of this, it hopefully will come through to try to clean up and give us a fair shot at housing pieces, opportunities, opportunities also for healthier eating that we've talked about many times. But as far as the housing choices and the economic opportunities, yeah, as far as the job force, workforce development and everything, we talked about a lot of that. But anyway, we'll talk more. I've been trying to wrap my head around this, my mind around it for some time now, and it's so broad and everything, but we'll continue talking to, because we're all here to help the city, but as far as District Three, we're hurting, we're hurting in a lot of areas. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Counsel Woodson?
Thank you, sir. Director Scott and Ms. Mitchell, thank you very much for your presentation today. I do have a question and a comment. Lots of times when you hear at the national level, or at GMA, or ACCG, even in the community, when you speak to realtors, their number about, their number for affordable housing is still very high for the income of these individuals in this area and in the area throughout the city. What is your organization considering affordable income? Because, affordable housing, excuse me, because that's my biggest frustration, when I go to the chamber, or I go other places, and they talk about affordable housing, affordable housing is about $150,000, $200,000. Well, not everybody can afford that amount of money. So, when we keep using the word affordable housing, I just get these goosebumps because the word is not appropriate for what we're trying to do, you know, in our communities that are needed throughout the city. Might not have an answer, you might, but I wanted you to understand that concern.
Yeah, I'm very well-prepared, and I thank you for that question. When we talk about affordable housing, HUD defines affordable housing as housing that exceeds 30% of the income of the household. So, if a family is paying more than 30%, you could say 29, 31, but that's the standard that's federally set, and so, affordable housing would be housing that people are contributing more than 30% of their income to. And so, from the HUD definition, which is the definition that my office adopts, we are seeking to find those housing opportunities and leverage the federal funds to create housing that is not so far priced outside of the rental market based off the average income for the households, based off the income that is set by HUD, based off household sides, is a 30, you know, they have all these different income charts. So, we want to try to make sure that we can create housing that people can afford, is high-quality, great areas. One of the things that we said in the presentation is that we want to explore all areas of opportunity, so that way, there wouldn't be one particular section. We're looking to create affordable housing wherever the opportunity presents itself within our city limits.
And the other question was, sorry, I have three. The other question, your presentation is wonderful, but I'm just kind of deeping in a little bit further based on our conversation in the community and my years of service. When we talk about hosting workshops to promote life skills and houses such as tenants' rights and credits and so forth and so on, are y'all considering something like they're doing in True Spring, where you're taking the community itself to take investment and giving them the skills to develop their community and their homes? Is that part of what you're talking about here? Because I'm very, very impressed with True Spring, I always say it wrong, True Spring. I'm always impressed on how they have motivated that community, and I feel that should go throughout our whole city. And to me, they are the testimony, like we would say in church, you know, the testimony that if you have faith and you believe and you're willing to work, you can get blessed and you can learn these traits, and you can have a better quality of life for your family. So, I wanted to dig in a little bit deeper to see, is that some of the things that you're talking about? Because everybody talks about tenant rights, everybody talks about credit, but that's not what the people need. The people need to get their hands dirty in their own home, and knowing that, excuse me, excuse me, my asthma is acting up a little. People need to realize, and this is my frustration all the time, and matter of fact, I told this to an old girlfriend of my son, because I saw how she wasn't taking care of the property, and her comment to me was, "Well, I don't own it, I rent it." And my comment back to her was, "But you live in it, and when people look at it, they're not looking at who you rented from, they're looking at you," you know? And I think this is what we have to instill in people, that even though you're renting the property, the condition that the property is and what you're doing talks about you and not the actual owner unless you point that finger. And to me, I guess, I probably get slapped in the hand for saying all this, but I just think we need to take back a sense of pride, you know, a sense of, "Hey, I live here, I want this beautiful, I want it nice, I want to do this for, because I want people to respect." Lately, on my Facebook, I've been like telling restaurants that come now, places that come, and I remind people, "You're in South Columbus. Uptown is in South Columbus, CSU's in South Columbus, Historic District's in South Columbus." Spring Rock, it's just the pockets, and we need to empower the people and the businesses and the powers to improve, and that's what I'm hoping that your plan and your program is what's going to happen.
Absolutely, Counselor, and you can look forward to seeing us implement those types of things. We want to take a more holistic approach. Economic is one side, but if we don't connect every piece of a life that will, of every resource that we know, that we have, and put it in our toolkit and address these communities, then we won't be able to have the success, in my opinion, that we expect. So, we're working very diligently to make sure that we have arrows in our quiver, and we've got the right tools in our toolbox as we approach such a, you know, a big need for our community.
And thank you, and I apologize if I took more time, but I just wanted to make sure we had a clear understanding, we weren't doing the same thing we always do.
No.
We're jumping in there, we're doing like True Spirit.
Yes.
In Spring, we're jumping in there, and we're going to make a difference.
We're looking to empower and engage, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we do have a motion and a second to approve the submission of the plan. Please cue the vote. Counselors, enter your votes, yes or no? All right, it's approved.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have purchases, and the first purchase...
All right, did you say A through G?
H.
A through H. Yeah, we will, but right now, there's a motion to approve items A through H. There's a second. Any discussion? All right, hold on, we've got, anybody want one pulled? Counselor Thomas?
I'd like to pull the add-on H.
All right, so, this is to approve items A through G. All right, if you would cue that vote, and Counsel, this is voting on items A through G. All right, there, those purchases are approved. The City Manager, if you would, go through all the purchases?
Sure.
And then, give a little extra attention, I think, to H and explaining what that is.
And actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have the Director of Public Works to come up and talk about H before we move forward on that item. But A is full maintenance shop services and repairs necessary because we have a lack of mechanics, much like we do drivers, and we want to be able to contract out maintenance work on an as-needed basis, but within the budget. B, brokers for general insurance placement, it's an annual contract. C, protective fire clothing and accessories for fire EMS. D, customization services for the court management system. E, additional software license for GIS. F is consulting services for employee benefits plan. G is storage facility rental payment for the Sheriff's Office's continuation of rental space for evidence and things like that, and the Sheriff's Office, they've been doing that for a number of years. And H, that we are going to have the Director come up and talk about, if you so inclined to support this, would be an amendment to the agreement that we currently have with M-Waste contracting out for five routes for picking up yard waste, bulk waste. Obviously, you're still hearing from your constituents. They are still working hard every day to catch up, and so, I've heard from each of you, I've heard you loud and clear, and so, we need to do some additional contracting out that we can satisfy our citizens' constituents, and I know that you approved the million dollars tonight, at least for the $18, but we are still challenged, obviously, not just here in Columbus, but I'm talking to others, and they're going through the same thing. And then, of course, we're watching COVID, the variant, pick back up, and so, we want to try and get ahead of anything that might happen going forward. And so, we have a proposal for your consideration, and I'm going to ask Mike Criddle to come and talk about that proposal, and then, we'll see where you want to go with it after he's answered your questions. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors, Mr. City Manager. Go ahead and go through this whole thing.
I'm sorry, Mike, hold on just a second. Counselor Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I know Counselor Thomas pulled this, which I was glad, I have some questions too, but I'd really like to afford the Director, I know he's going to, I think he's got an update, am I right?
Yes.
Maybe go ahead and give your update, because I don't want to like steal your thunder and then start, you know, asking questions now when you've got a presentation prepared that's, you know, there's, might be a lot of redundancy in there, so maybe you can answer some of these questions, and I don't have to ask them.
Sure.
Okay, okay. I will start at the beginning, and good evening. Thank you. I want to start by giving just a little bit of a brief explanation. I think there's still maybe a little bit of... there's still maybe a little bit of confusion about waste types. And I, it sounds simple, but in, we, when we talk about it in Public Works and waste collection, we all talk the same. It's, it's like, like talking to a, a different language, talking in a different language to a, to a different profession. I want to give just a little bit of an update here. We've got, you get a lot of calls and say we're, we're behind on yard waste. We are behind on yard waste in certain areas, and we'll talk about that in just a second. The main thing we're behind on is bulk waste, and that's what I want to focus on a little, a little bit here. We've got two types of bulk waste. We've got green bulk waste and we've got non-green bulk waste. And green bulk waste is pretty self-explanatory, trimmings, limbs, things like that, that are not yard, that are not containerized bagged yard waste, per se. That's bulk green waste. The non-green waste are furniture, mattresses, tires, things like that, that you obviously see sitting around the, the city as well. That's an example of a bulk waste, a green bulk waste pile. And, and this is what we see when we go out. I'm not going to make excuses for my folks because they work hard. We're very shorthanded of folks, as, as City Manager mentioned a minute ago, but this is what we see. And the, the problem when I send out a bulk waste truck, a grab-all, that's a truckload right there. He picks it up, he's gone. Well, then the neighbor calls and says, hey, the truck was in my neighborhood, but he left. And they're mad. I get it. Depending on where you are, it's an hour trip. It may be an hour trip to the landfill, unload it. If it's muddy, it may be a little longer, and then they're back on the street again. And it may be, they may get three houses, four houses, the whole day, that one truck. And that's where we are. That's another example of, of a green waste pile. And that's another truckload right there, a whole complete truckload. Because the truckload's about fourteen yards, they're not, they're not huge trucks, about fourteen yards is what they hold. That's a truckload. This is a good example right here, and this is really what, and, and this is more just so everyone knows where, where we are on this, we're on the same page. The bagged waste is yard waste. And if a yard waste truck comes by, like an Am Waste truck or one of our yard waste trucks, a rear-load truck, they'll pick up that bagged waste and they leave those large limbs for the grab-all because they can't put them in that truck. And again, the truck came, he picked up these bags and he left all these limbs. Yes, ma'am, we'll be back. When will you be back? I'm not sure. We're working on your area. I'll, I'll get back with you. And I know you guys have gotten emails and texts from me saying that, and that, that's where we are. That's, this is pretty typical. There's, you can see one of these, and that's not an eviction. I looked it up. That address was not an eviction. That was just some, I don't know what it is. I set out. But it's, it's a lot of, that's, and again, that's, that's one or two loads. If we can't get it on, if they, because they can't really pile it up a whole lot, because I don't want stuff falling out of the street and neither do you. But that's one or two loads right there on that one street, or one house on one street. This is mixed. They have to get out, my guys get out, and they separate this out, and it just takes a lot of time. We get a lot of mixed loads of a lot of different stuff. If it can be separated out, it helps us out, trying to pass this on to all the citizens and constituents. So it does help us out. It's just a speed and efficiency issue, the, the mixed. This was an interesting one. I wish they had called me a little sooner than they did. Those are two Am Waste trucks collecting. There were sixty bags of yard waste at one address. Sixty bags. Every one of those bags has to be cut open and dumped out, and the bag put in a different location, because we can't put the plastic bags in that landfill because they don't decompose. And the stuff inside the, the plastic bag obviously doesn't decompose. This goes into a composting area. Sixty bags at one address. Like I told them, I said, I wish you'd have called me before you did that. Clearly a contractor. Nobody's going to have sixty bags at their private residence that they did themselves. What we're doing now to increase visibility in these areas at the direction of Deputy City Manager Goodwin, it was a good idea, is to get trucks out into all areas. We're moving trucks around so that people see them, because I hear, we, we haven't seen a truck in our area in, pick a number, three weeks, a month, whatever it is. So this is what they look like. I know it's a little bit confusing, but you look at the arrows there, they're probably more descriptive, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday routes. They're all working from the outside, working their way towards the middle of the city. And that way, there's a truck in every route for every day. And that just increases the visibility so people can see we're out there trying to, trying to get these areas cleaned up. It's a monumental task. The red areas are the Am Waste routes, and the, the ones outlined in black are just the quadrants. Everything that's not outlined in red are the CCG routes. Same way with bulk. Four quadrants instead of, instead of the, the five you saw there, just four quadrants and work our way in from the outside to the middle. I will tell you that the driver shortage is real. It's extreme. I've got thirteen drivers now. I, I want to pause for just a second to tell you a real-life story here. It's quick. There's a private hauler, I won't say the name for obvious reasons, but there's a, there's a private hauler in our area, that's National Private Hauler, that is now offering three thousand dollar signing bonuses, and they pay three dollars an hour more than our drivers get. So guess what? Now I'm thirteen drivers short. And I, it was last time we talked, I was twelve. It's real, guys. They're leaving. The same credentials, they don't have to have any training. They jump from this truck to this truck. They get a three thousand dollar signing bonus the day they come on. Now, it, it, they do have to pay it back if they don't stay a year, but it's three thousand dollars in their pocket today and three dollars more an hour than what we pay.
And, and they're advertising it on radio.
Yes.
And, and, and they're all for full benefits.
Yes.
You know, I, I, I told the mayor, I pulled it up, Deputy City Manager Hodge, I mean, I heard it on the radio all weekend.
The benefits are almost identical to ours. Very close.
So that's what we're, we're challenged.
Yes. We are still behind. Last week, I gave you an update, and it was, it was correct as far as I knew it at the time. I will never tell you something that's not true. It's not in my nature to do that. I'm not smart enough to remember lies. I do good to remember the truth. This is the, this is the situation. Your Am Waste was a little bit farther behind than we thought. They were counting the days wrong. This is the way we count the days. If I come to your house and I've been to your house today, and I come back eight days from now, I'm a day behind. And that's why we count the days. It's, it's a seven-day cycle. They were not counting it exactly like that. They are about one and a half to two weeks behind, depending on where they are. They are catching up. They're gaining ground. It's just slow. It's painfully slow because of the volume. When they have sixty bags at one location, that's painful. It's, it's tough.
Well, and you might explain that they don't just pick the entire bag up to carry it. They've got to cut the bag open, dump it, and leave the bag there.
No, sir. No, better than that. They have, they, I, I should have brought the picture. There's, they called one of their drivers to get a, bring a pickup truck over there, their personal pickup truck, and they filled the back of the pickup truck up with the bags. They can't leave the bags there.
That's right.
We pick those bags up, but they can't go in the truck.
Yeah.
Because that goes to a, a landfill that, you know, we're composting.
But, but that's a good point about the fact that you can't leave the bags there. But I wanted to make the point that you don't just go and grab and just put sixty bags on a truck. You've got to open the bag up.
Cut the bottoms of them, dump them out, and then put the bags in a bag to contain them, to, to haul them away. Now, the good news is that the, the, the CCG crews, the Columbus crews, our Public Works crews are two days behind on yard. We're very close to catching up. The five trucks have helped us in that area very much, the five Am Waste trucks have helped. We're two days behind now. That's, that's really good. In another two weeks, we'll be caught up on yard waste, on our routes. And I think that by the end of August, I think that Am Waste will be as well. What we need help in is that next category, the bulk, and that's the ask. That was the ask, it was on the list earlier. What I can do is, is take those, take those five drivers that I can divert them away from yard waste and put them on bulk. If I can give them five more routes, that's five more drivers I can, and I can make a dent in this bulk. I can't do it without resources. I just can't. This is the most frustrating I've ever been in my career. I've never failed at anything I've ever done in my life, ever, ever. I'm not kidding. I have not. I worked on oil rig. I carried ninety-six pounds of cement up and downstairs all day long, and I swore I would not quit that job, and I did not. I've never failed at anything, and this is, this is failure. This is failure. We're six weeks behind it, and if we don't get some help, it's going to get worse. We're in a bind, guys. This is, this is not, this is not a thing but absolute desperation here. I do believe we can get caught up. If we get those five extra routes, we can be caught up by the end of August. We, we did at, I believe Counselor House requested that we open up the landfill for bulk and yard waste. That's been done. Good suggestion. That was done immediately, the next day.
Counselor House?
Just a fast question, make sure I'm straight. Am Waste is going to stick with yard clippings, the yard waste?
Yes, sir.
And the city's going to handle the graballs and pick up the bulk waste, whether it's green or not green?
That's correct. And, and, and the reason being is because they're geared up for that. They understand how that, and they have those trucks. They don't have the grab-all trucks readily available to them, and the lead time is very long. We have the trucks. They're ready to go. They can, they can start four weeks. It's, it, it's some time. They got to hire some folks. But they, I wish they could start tomorrow. Counselor Crabbe, I wish they could start yesterday. But they can start, they can start the week of August twenty-third. I don't know exactly what day yet. We're still talking to them about that. But they're ready to go. And it would be five additional trucks.
As they hire, they can deploy a truck. If they hire one, they can deploy the truck instead of waiting till they get all, so we may get somebody out there in some quadrants.
That's correct. They, they expect to be fully deployed by that week in August.
I got you. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, sir. And like I said, CCG crews will be diverted to, to bulk, and we can get them, we can make a dent in this. There's the cost. It's not cheap.
And, and that's, that's holding the line with the current agreement.
Yes, sir. They agreed to, they agreed to the same price they agreed to last year. Even though their costs have gone up, they said they would hold the line on this, like City Manager said.
Counselor Davis?
No, I'm, I'm going to let it finish. I'm, I'm.
I think it.
That was it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I, look, I have to ask, did anybody ever think that this is not going to cost money to fix?
Hope not.
Okay. So I think we all agree on that. Um, you know, and, and I've said it many times before, there's two, there's two sides of the equation here. There's a customer service side, and you've got two different perspectives on that. You've got the citizens, you've got the city. And then you have the problem itself that we're trying to fix, which you just were talking about. And I think we dealt a little bit with the customer service side tonight. Now we've got to fix this problem. The problem is catching up, not only catching up, but the problem is providing adequate, timely, scheduled service, right?
Yes, sir.
That's paid for. That's what citizens pay for. One of the problems is with the citizens keep doing what we tell them to do. We keep telling them to put their stuff out every week, and they're doing that. Lady called me today. It's going on three months now. Three months, and I've called it in twice and sent text photos, and it wasn't just her yard, but its yards on the surrounding roads that are off a main road. Somehow the main roads get picked up, but theirs is not. She told, called me again today and said, or have, did anything happen? Nothing's happened over here. And she said, well, I'm, my people about to put another load out. But that's what's happening when, you know, I don't know how you catch up because people just keep putting it out. They're doing what we tell them to do and then hoping that we get to it. And then, you know, you're on the other side saying, I can't, I can't, I can't. I'm trying hard, but I can't, I can't. We got to figure that out. And I, it, it, you know, there's no easy way, but you've got a lot of variables that you talked about that, like I said, this council does it. We don't have a plan in front of us. We don't have a action plan in front of us that I can sit here and say, I will approve it. If you need to raise the pay for the drivers, I will approve that today. If you need to raise the pay for workers, I'll do that today. If you need to, uh, uh, raise the pay for drivers, mechan, oh, excuse me, mechanics, I said drivers, mechanics, I mean, I do that today. These are all problems that, that part of it, when I look at that, that's not going away. You, you still got a problem. And your problem's going to continue to go. And, you know, that's where I'm at. I don't see the end of this right now, and the, and the citizens are just continuing to do what we tell them to do. Guy called me yesterday, paid a hundred and seventy dollars because he was kind of being shamed in his neighborhood because he had his stuff out there, and everybody was shaming him in his neighborhood, and he had to pay it. And there's somebody in this audience that probably knows who that person is. And, you know, it's, we can talk about these things. It's on both sides of the, the equation, but we've got to try to figure out and fix it. I, I thought about adding more routes, and I will approve this, Mr. City Manager, I'll approve this. And I thought about adding more routes too, but I'm sitting here going, well, why don't you just take a truck and put in each district? Because, you know, the residents, my constituents, don't see any action, so they're like, where are these trucks at? So, you know, if we're doing that, I mean, it makes sense to put a truck in a district and let them just start hammering the district. But you can make the argument that working from outside in, it might be better to work from inside out. You know, in my district, maybe not in the other council member's district because of the geographical territory and the large masses of land. Certainly the smaller lots and stuff is more noticeable in the dense neighborhoods versus non-dense neighborhoods and, and therefore, and it just keeps piling up. So I, one of the questions I have is just on the communication side. I'm trying to figure out, and I would ask this question tonight, do we know where the hotspots are?
Yes, sir.
When I say a hotspot, you know what I mean by that?
Yes, sir, very well.
We know, how do we know where these places are?
We can track it through the Q Alert system, through the 311 system.
Through 311?
It's very easy to do a query on that, and, and you can see where the, where the code twos or where the requests are coming from.
Don't we have drivers running routes every week to pick up household garbage and household waste?
Yes, sir.
Are, are they writing this stuff down where all this stuff is in order to get it back and get it where it can be structured and actually come up with that strategic attack, where you can hammer some of these places where it just continues? I mean, I've got a resident here tonight that's well over eight weeks, but some of the people in her neighborhood have gotten it picked up, but she hasn't. And she's, it's to the point that it's, and it's yard waste, okay? And that's another thing I want to talk about. Probably Counselor Thomas is going to say the same thing, but, you know, we've got a, and just talking about it tonight, I realized that we've got somewhat of a little confusion going on between the citizens and what we do. It may be internally in the, in Public Works that we call it green bulk and, and what was the other term?
Non-green.
Non-green bulk, but I, you know what? I've never heard, as long as I've been up here, I've never heard it put that way. Never heard it. It's always been yard waste and limbs and all, and then trees for fees. That's always been separate. Matter of fact, you get four services, household, recycling, yard and limbs, and then bulk, which bulk is furniture and all that kind of stuff. So I've never heard it put as bulk, uh, which, you know, maybe that's the way it is today, but it's never been described like that. But citizens don't see it like that. They see when the grass clippings get picked up in the bags, which are used by garbage truck, the garbage trucks, you know, the quote garbage trucks will get those. And then they don't see the limb carriers or the, the graballs that can come around and get the big piles. They're trying to figure out, wait a minute, you skipped me. You didn't get it all. What's going on, you know? And then they get even more confused and more frustrated. So I don't know. There seems to be a, a communication matter here too, where we need to connect with the, with the citizens and, and help them understand. But, um, you know, the, the, and we've got to, we've got to figure out how to make the adjustments. And it might be something simple, is just to schedule and just asking the citizens to maybe put it out every two weeks. Help us out a little bit. Your green bulk, maybe put it out every two weeks. And then your bulk, non-bulk, maybe put it out every month until it will help us catch up. Because right now, they're putting it out every week, and the way I look at it, it just keeps getting snowballing, and you can't catch up. And I don't know, right now, I don't know if the, the rest of these routes are going to be able to catch up, because it just keeps going and going and going. And we got to address that, and it may be, we're not going to do it tonight. And I think I had sent an email somewhere, and, and we had talked about it, where, you know, I had some thoughts on this matter. You know, maybe it's time, um, maybe it's time we, we have to start talking about a restructure. A restructure of the whole department. And maybe you can allocate some of the resources in other areas to provide better services, and then maybe, it may cost the citizens more money, but, you know, I rode around for three hours over across the river in Phoenix City, and I can tell you, I, I, you know, I didn't see a lot of problems over there. And they've dealt with the same issues that, that we have. But I think they use private, if I'm not mistaken, they use private over there.
They use a private contract.
I think it's about twenty-six, twenty-seven dollars a month.
Yeah, they, they do, they have a private contract.
For all their services.
And they pay better.
Well, you know, if that's the problem, then let's pay better.
Well, and, and that's, we.
I need a proposal.
We are advocates for that and have been for.
I just need a proposal. I just need a proposal. Bring me a proposal and I'll approve it.
And trust me, the proposal is coming. It'll be during a budget process. We're not going to bring it to you just in the middle of nowhere, but, but the proposal is coming.
Yeah, I, I mean, but I, I mean, I just want you to know where I, where I stand. If we need to do that, we need to do it. And we need to expedite it because he just said his problems, the director just said his problem's not getting better. I believe him. I mean, we know that. So I don't put the blame on anybody. I've always said it is what it is. And you just got to, we just got to fix it. But that's where we are right now. And you can't candy coat it. I mean, really, you can't, you can't candy coat the matter, but you've got to figure out a, a solution. So, um, I, I'll, I'm, I'm with you. I've said it, I don't know how many times I've said it, whatever you need, I'll support you because it, it's a problem that we got to address. And, and like I said, I start it and I'll finish. Anybody think it's not going to cost money to fix this? It's going to cost some money to fix it all the way across the board. And, and we just got to do it. Uh, and then we got to figure out a better way or a way to provide scheduled, timely, adequate services. We've done that in the past, and this city's done a good job over the years. And I know this is a, a tough situation, environment for everybody, but, um, we just got to figure it out. And I'm, I'm here, Mr. City Manager.
And I, I agree with you, Counselor Davis. We have, we were faced with and challenged with an unprecedented situation. I've been, you heard me say, early October 1st, I will have been here 37 years. Been city manager 16 years. In the 16 years as city manager and seven years as deputy city manager, we've never had this problem. But for the pandemic and the situation that's not just here in Columbus, but across the country and private, you know, I, I, private businesses are going through the same thing. You'll, you'll hear me say that. I know that's not city government and it's not yard waste or, and, and, and household waste is our first and highest priority. And so, but, but we are challenged in a way that we've never been before. And so it's going to take money to fix it. And, and we will fix it, but it's just, and we're going to get caught up. It, it's just that that's what we're going through right now.
And I, and look, I, I, last thing, I want all the counselors to know. When, when we, you know, tried to deal with the customer service matter, that we, uh, you know, it's, it's a small, like Counselor Thomas said, it's a gesture, but it's, to me, it's the right thing to do when you can't provide the service. But, you know, I, I asked, I said, you can take out any fund that you want to. And the city came back to me and said, this is what we'd like to do. I'm fine with that. Any month, pick a month, whatever. But, you know, we've got options to go into the fund balance. And we can deal with this. So it's not like we have to put all the strain and the burden on the Integrated Waste Fund. We don't have to do that. And we're fortunate enough to be in that position. But that's sometimes what you call your rainy day fund. And we're just fortunate enough that we've had a, 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 you know, we've, we've caught up and we've got help on the horizon too with, with more funding coming that we don't have to stress these other funds out. So I think we've got options and I'm willing to do my part. I just need to know, you guys need to tell me what, what I need to do. I'm not going to try to micromanage this, this matter. I just don't want to do that.
And, and, um, so, and we, when we talk about AARP tonight, we're going to bring you some other things that we propose. And I think if we do those things and then, you know, later we get the pay right, I, I think we'll be better, um, we'll be, be in a better position that even if there's another pandemic, this would not happen to us.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I believe you. I know y'all are working hard. And like I said, I don't blame anybody. It's just, it is what it is. And you got to, you know, you've just got to keep chipping away every day. So thank you for all the hard work and effort. But I know our people are working hard and the citizens need to know that. And, um, just help me do my part. That's all I ask.
And that's exactly what we want to do. And that's why we're bringing this tonight because I heard you, I got your emails and your text messages and because you heard from your constituents.
Oh, yeah.
And so that, you know, that last email I received from all of you, where you weighed in and I responded back to you, it was because I heard from you. And we heard from you. And we knew that we needed to do something and it was going to cost money. And that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Counselor Hough? Director Kredl?
Yes, sir. Through it all, thank you. I appreciate your service. We have, uh, as you well know, from Benny Hills to East Wind to Holly Hills and all over, Bunker Hill everywhere. They have been patient, you know? We talk all the time. And your trucks have been like in the pictures where you showed where we go out and the load is so large, they see the truck appear and then disappear. And then we get phone calls based on the fact that the truck was on the street, but it left early. But my, my first question is, I think Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin had told me they were working on the cameras. What I've witnessed over the last two months is to watch you all clean up an area and someone come in and dump two days later. And it seems to be private contractors that are doing renovation work and they're dumping late at night. And, uh, I think if we can move ahead on the cameras, uh, I got a call today from a neighbor, neighbor in my neighborhood and then a neighboring neighborhood, you know, that they were willing to go in and buy cameras if necessary. Because they are seeing it, but there's nothing they can do. The streets are clean when they go to bed. They wake up the next morning and someone's dumped in the cul-de-sac. Wondering Lane, cul-de-sac. Nobody parks up there that much to see the scenery. People park in, they wait for a good point and then they dump. Uh, the MacArthur coming in behind St. Mary's School, between the school and the cemetery. We cleaned it up on Wednesday, they dumped by Friday. So just riding around, that seems to be what's going on, like happened at my house that day. They came through at one o'clock in the morning and just got a running start in the truck and just pushed it all out in the street. So I trust what you have shown us, you know, that we'll get to that point. So if we can possibly find a way, Mr. City Manager, to get some cameras in places where we have hotspots.
We're working on it.
They're working on it.
Mayor, we, we had a meeting with the mayor, I think yes, what, yesterday, mayor? And, um, with, you know, we're doing an inventory and, and we've appointed Deputy City Manager Goodwin to pull all of the various areas together and we're, we're working on cameras.
Okay.
And, um, you know, and, and people are doing, private businesses are doing exactly what you said. I know staff told me, you know, you saw the mayor on the news about the Bellwood School and they went and cleaned it up. And they were riding back through there and there were two trucks pulling in, ready to dump again.
Right.
And, um, and so, I mean, they had just cleaned it up.
This was broad daylight.
In broad daylight. I mean, it's crazy. And so, but we need to, we, we need to, with the cameras, we need to get them. But we're going to need your help in when they go to court. We need the maximum penalty.
Yeah.
We, we, we don't need playing around with it. They, they need to be fined.
Yeah, but everybody in the neighborhoods, they are, at this point in time, they are willing to testify if needed.
But that's, that's where we're going to need your help and, and record us court.
Yeah, because that's, that's, that's the biggest problem. Now, I got two calls today and, you know, we'll talk later. But, um, it's all about either dumping or neighbors that don't care. They just put it in an open can and the wind, like it was today, blows it out down the street and everything. But, um, going ahead, according to what I saw tonight, you were saying that we'll have trucks up and running and we're looking probably toward, what was it, August 23rd or so, toward the end of August? Yeah, that we should see some.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Some changes because all of us are going through the same thing. And, uh, at this point in time, I think I'm somewhere around 23,000 or so people in the district. I think we're pretty even for the most part. Some are a little bit larger, but they tried to equal us out back during the last census. I think it's about 23,000 or so. But, um, are the apartment complexes, they have them on private contracts, right?
They do, but that doesn't, doesn't mean we don't get calls. We, they'll, a lot of times stuff gets put out on the, on the roadway, on the curb. We don't know where it came from. Nobody, of course, is going to own up to us, so we have to go clean that up as well. Particularly if it's actually on the roadway, which happens frequently. A lot of times it's furniture and move outs or set outs or whatever you want to call them. But it's stuff that gets set out there. We end up doing that as well.
It, it happens all the time.
It does.
Right over off Isaac Drive and you'll see it.
Will they be, will there be any information as far as a, a better way to handle yard waste in the future? As far as people cleaning up the yards and putting it in a different type of container, a hauler, other contractor?
We, 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 we had a conversation about that a few years back. Containerizing it. And we'll be having more conversation with you about that.
Yeah, because it seems as though, uh, a lot of the bags are left, you know, that way.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not favorable.
Right.
For them to want to have to get caught up in that.
But we're going to have. We're going to have a lot of.
Last week, I had a, a young lady, she had yard waste that was, uh, out. She was cleaning up a property. And it was out about two weeks. She heard the news. She was fine with waiting. And then a contractor in the area came through and dumped wood all on top of her grass and everything, limbs. So then code and, code enforcements came out and tagged it. And she had three days to get it cleaned up or go to court. So luckily she had a person that had a truck large enough to take it all out free. But that's what's been going on. But I thank you.
We hear that a lot.
And, um, and I'm happy that it was recommended and they opened the landfill. I took some things, um, some, to the landfill Saturday. And, um, you know, it, it works, you know? You take it out there.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, I was one of the ones that, um, responded to the email from most of the other counselors. And one of the things that I said to you is that I wanted you to bring us a plan. I hope that what you have brought to us tonight is the first step in that plan.
It is.
That there are other things to follow. When I drive out of my driveway, my next door neighbor has a pile of, of, uh, yard waste that has been there four weeks. I know, I've counted them. I drive down Second Avenue quite a bit. And between 14th Street and 15th Street on Second Avenue, there's a pile of yard waste that has been there at least six weeks. I know because I've counted it. And I don't know what the answer is. I'm not the professional. You're the professional. But, you know, it seems to me that as smart as you are and as smart as the city manager and the deputy city manager is, you could figure out a plan. And we wouldn't have to go through this so much. I, I'm not blaming you personally, but I am saying there's got to be a way to do this. Um, and maybe, you know, maybe it's, uh, my neighborhood will be picked up the first Monday of every month and your neighborhood will be picked up the second Monday of, something to give our citizens some assurance that we are looking into this problem and we're going to take care of it. My next door neighbor, whose, uh, yard waste has been there for a while, said she has called 3-1-1. And every time she calls, she gets a ticket number that somebody come out and take care of it. Well, they haven't. And I don't know where the breakdown is. I don't know if she doesn't understand what we're promising or if there's some. There's got to be a way to do this. And I'm looking forward to the day when I get a phone call that says, I put out my yard waste today because it was the first Monday of the month and they came and picked it up. You know, and, and I just, I just want a plan. And if it's a plan to increase the pay, don't wait until next June to bring that to us. Don't wait until the budget process to bring that to us. Bring it to us as soon as you work it out, as soon as you think you've got a plan that will help solve this. I think this that we're working on tonight is going to go a long way to help pick up some of that trash, that yard waste. And I, as I said, I hope it is the first step in a larger plan to get this taken care of. We can do this. We do amazing. We can do this. We can do this. And I'm counting on the professionals to come back to us with a plan of how we're going to be able to do this and, and quickly. Think outside the box. Talk to us about it. Give us some assurance that, and give these folks sitting out here some assurance that we understand and we're, we're trying our best to do what needs to be done. Director Kredl, I, I'm counting on you. Because one of the reasons we hired you is because of your reputation and your professionalism and your, uh, ability to get things done. Let's get this done and let's get it done just as quick as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll get off this soapbox just as soon as you do that. Thank you.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. When Counselor Davis was speaking, he mentioned that, um, one of his constituents said that she had a pile in front of her house and that they were going to add to the pile. Is, who's they? Is it a professional yard maintenance company? Because I don't think that professional yard maintenance companies should be putting waste in front of the houses. They should, I hate mandates, you know I do. But I think that if they're a professional maintenance company, they need to take their yard waste and green bulk and take it to the city dump. And if we have to waive tipping fees for a while, I don't have a problem with that. Or, you know, maybe when they get their licenses, we could give them a little, something to put on their truck so that we know that those, that they have paid in advance, some, some form of tipping fee. You know, look into something like that so that they are encouraged to go and dump that and we are not responsible for it. I'm wondering if we shouldn't do that with contractors in this town? Because maybe that would help Bruce with his issue where they're dumping it in the middle of a cul, at the end of a cul-de-sac because they don't want to pay the tipping fees. I don't know. This is, that's just something that's been going through my head that maybe we get our funds in a different way through the licensing. That's what I had to say.
Thank you. Counselor Garrett?
I know you and I talk almost every day. We have a very, very close relationship and you've, you've helped me out on numerous occasions. Uh, please know that I, I know in the background you are doing what you can and we will meet if we have to early in August. I mean, I'll, I'll come here if you've got, if you come up with a plan, like Counselor Thomas said, to, to increase wages. And I know my contractor, they've hauled 62 loads of weight to the dump and they had a big trailer. So I know, you know, now that you've put things in perspective, I understand what the issue is. And I think, you know, we are going to have to think outside the box. Maybe we need to reach out to every private contractor we've got in town and ask and offer them, you know, no tipping fees. And maybe I just texted my yard waste guy and I said, hey, can y'all make sure you start taking mine if, if you're leaving it? Uh, but I've got somebody also doing tree removal right now. But, uh, you know, whatever it is, wages, mechanics, trucks. But I've got somebody also doing tree removal right now, but, you know, whatever it is, wages, mechanics, trucks, as soon as you got, you've got it, I think you're going to have six votes and more than six votes to get passed. So please bring it to us.
Well, and.
And Winchester's got to get it tomorrow.
And Counselor, you know, and, and I, I heard from each of you, and see, I can bring you that next week. But, but what you will have is, you, you know, if, 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 if we don't have a strategic approach to adjusting pay, and you adjust garbage truck drivers and metro bus drivers, and they end up making more than a police officer, then you got another problem. We need, it, it's just not as simple as bring it next week and I'll vote for it. I'll bring it, but I'll put you in a very awkward position that I don't want to put you in. It has to be strategic and comprehensive. Because I, I mean, there's no reason I don't, that I'm sitting here saying, I'm not going to bring it next week because I don't want them to have it. I want them to have it. I don't want to put you in the position that it would put you in. So I can do it the way I, from the professional approach that I think it needs to be done. I can do it just by just saying we're gonna do it. So I want to do it right.
And you will.
Sure.
Counselor Woodson?
Mr. Kredel, just want to say to you, thank you, thank you for all you've done. And I want to tell you, you have not failed. You know, you have not failed, I need you to understand that because we had COVID and a lot of things happened. There's a lot of different elements, and you have proven yourself already because you have tried everything you can do. You even had your supervisors, you know, on trucks driving. You are bringing us a plan. We're all here talking, but the bottom thing is, we all need to vote. You mentioned, a, a plan's been mentioned and you're bringing it. You're not bringing it all one time because we might give us a heart attack with the price tag that's with it. But you are bringing it part by part. And I tend to agree with the city manager because I had that conversation in the bond. We want to do the increase because we need it, but you have to look across the board. Because if you don't, you're going to have other departments and others, you know, well, I'm not, I'm going to quit my job too if that's what it takes for me to get a raise. So I would say as things are hot right now, yes, put that plan together that is being spoken about around the table, but at the same time, do it as the city manager said, professional and across when we're talking about raising salaries. The other thing I wanted to ask you because I was very curious, I think it was Glenn or Thomas that said it, about the apartments. We have a lot of small apartments that I see, and I know about three. I know two in North Columbus and I know one in South that I see every time I go by there. And I see the trash cans, you know, out at the end of the, that apartment building. But you said that the apartment buildings are supposed to have their own dump, dumpsters.
If they have more than four units, I believe, I'd.
Uh, has to be more than four units?
City attorney may correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know the ordinance, wording of the ordinance exactly.
Can you check, because these have more than four units?
How many units there are, but there's a unit number beyond that certain unit number, then they're supposed to have their own private service.
Well, I would, I'm going to ask city manager, that the person that's going around looking at my district, whatever, I want his new task to be, or his and her new task is to see how many of these apartment buildings that just has the trash cans out, you know, on the side of it, don't have a dumpster? How many, how many apartments are on there? Because I got a funny feeling that a lot of property owners are not up to buying by that. Because I know too offhand, I mean, when we go back here, I can give you both of the addresses, where there's more than four apartments. And they have, you know, they, they've done like the little construction where they have like a little box, and then they have the different garbage cans in there, and then people go shove it. And in one of those, I know there's been a mattress there for maybe five months now, and someone called me and complained, and it's in North Columbus. And they complained to me about it, and I told them, look, we're trying, you know, the same thing we've been saying. So when you discuss the apartments or somebody mention it, that's when it came to my mind. You know, what's the limitations, what is, and you said maybe four?
Well, we'll, we'll check the ordinance and, and see, and then veri- just to verify.
And it would be great if you'd come back and tell us.
Sure.
Come back and tell us.
And let you know.
You know, so that the constituents can hear and these owners can hear and then say, we're about to clean up. You're un, uncompliance, you need to be in compliance. Get your dumpster, don't depend on us. Okay, thank you. And please, stop beating up yourself, you're doing an outstanding job with what you got.
I, I see it differently, but thank you, I appreciate the words, I do.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just want to think a question was posed to me a minute ago. No, the person, the individual is a senior citizen, and they have family members that come out, and it's been three months now, and it's just stockpiling, they have stuff to do. We get storms, all kinds of stuff that happen, and they, the police has to put, so they just have to keep putting it out. And they told me they got to trim their, it's been three months, so they got to trim their hedges again, the stuff that's getting wild. And it gets stacked up again, the pile gets bigger, she doesn't want to do that. But you're talking about a senior citizen that, that can't do the work. And you have to be, you, you have to understand when it's a paid service, it's not for an individual, that the individual has to get out there and do the work. It's a service for a household, for residents. And I think we've got a policy in place already for the commercial side, if I'm not mistaken. I thought that's a, that's against, you can't do that, and that's one of the reasons we implemented Trees for Fee, or Fees for Tree. We did that because the commercial contractors were taking advantage of it. So we just figured out a better way to do it, and, and we get paid to do that. But, no, I mean, you've got, I, I don't know if you can just say that the, the, you know, you know, how do you define a commercial contractor putting your stuff out? If somebody can't mow their lawn and they have to hire somebody to mow the lawn, does that designate that they have to automatically take it away? No, they're just cutting the grass for the same person. So, you know, now if they're leaving their other stuff that they've collected and leaving it in one place and expecting the city to, it's a different story. So I think, Mr. City Manager, don't we have a policy in place on the commercial side, the commercial?
Yes.
We do. So we already deal, we're supposed to deal with that, but it's really very hard. I guess what I'm saying, it's very, very, very hard to, to tell. You can tell with the, you can tell with the large trees and all cut down, I mean, that's a no-brainer. But, and we've got special enforcement that goes out and, and deals with those cases. But you've got.
It, it's very difficult to, to enforce.
It is, it, it's difficult to enforce, but I'd make the argument that people who are renting households or landlords that have households that they're generating revenue off of, you know, and then leaving all that bulk that was showing up there, they should pay for that, not the city. That should be the same as Trees for Fees, I said that same before, bulk for a fee. But somebody should be responsible for that, that shouldn't be the city or the taxpayers carry that load. So, I mean, that needs to be looked at.
We take, we'll take, we'll take a look at that. All right, thank you, sir. All right. Somewhere in there was a resolution, purchase on H. It was a motion to approve from Counselor House, second from Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if you would, queue it up, let's.
It's, it's not in the system, Mayor, it was ad, an add-on.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's right, thank you. It is approved.
So, and, and so Mr. Mayor, with that, I want to move into the updates and presentations. And Norm Easterbrook is here, sorry that the hour has been long, he's been waiting. And so I've got just an update from the River Center, and then we've got Beva Dores here with enrichment services and update. Tax Commissioner, very brief update. We've already had the yard waste, so we're done with that, and then we'll wrap it up with ARP, American Rescue. So, Mr. Norm, Norman?
Great, thank you, thank you very much. I had to send the singers and the dancers home, they were on overtime. But appreciate the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of River Center for the Performing Arts. You know, listening to this, it's been a rough year for every, every one of us in this community, every institution. But I met about a month ago with the mayor and city manager in presenting our audit to them as part of our requirements for the use of the hotel motel tax. And they suggested that council might be interested. Just to get a quick update, I'm not going to read every one of these points to you. It's simply a list of talking points that I put together for meetings like this. I hope that you will look through it, and if there's anything that stands out to you that you have a question about, or anything you'd like to ask me about, please feel free to shoot me an email or make a call on, to me at, at my office. I'm happy to address those concerns. But like so many institutions, in March of 2020, for River Center, really in the space of about five days, our entire product line stopped. We, and I'm going to advance this real quick, our entire product line stopped, our audience went away. We lost 100% of our touring activity and 90% of our rental activity. River Center relies a great deal on cash flow through our budget to make things work. So that was a real challenge and a real, a real problem for us. We immediately adjusted our budget to take an austerity posture with our budget. Our budget dropped from $4 million to just $1.3 million, really in just the course of days. We retained that austerity budgeting even through to this month, since the crisis began, just to keep the organization solvent. So we carried that budget through into our fiscal year '21 and '22. Two major events for the community canceled in that date, in that period of time. The Miss Georgia competition canceled, as did the Georgia Thesbian Conference. And those were significant losses for our community and the uptown area. We did go ahead and purchase sanitizing equipment, we installed shields in all of our dressing rooms. But what really struck us the most is that we could only put 70 people backstage. We could only accommodate 38 people in our lobbies. We could only accommodate six people at any given time in our restroom facilities. So for us, we simply could not operate our facility and have it open to the public in ways that were the best, best use and highest use of the, of the facility and, and worked for us throughout, since opening. We dropped our staff from 35 individuals, now down to 12. And that has caused a lot of folks to work overtime, job descriptions to be changed. Our upper management took salary reductions. We were very careful to make sure that those making $40,000 or less that we retained did not receive any salary reduction. We kept as many people on furlough as we possibly could so our employees could maintain their benefits throughout this period. So we worked very hard to, to, to try to keep our employees with us. We were fortunate to receive a payroll protection loan. That loan was forgiven just a couple of months ago, that was in the amount of $226,000. What we lost also with the loss of our business was a reduction in the hotel motel tax. Annually, we receive about $650,000 in hotel motel tax. That amount was cut more than in half with the COVID crisis. I want to refer back to the $1.3 million figure, that is what it costs for Rivers, for us to maintain River Center, to keep it clean, to keep it secure, and to keep it in a safe operational capacity. That doesn't include any programming, any marketing, or any of the things that you see out in the public. And it was incumbent upon us to make sure that we held up our part of the bargain. And that's where the payroll protection program came in so useful for us. We also did receive a wonderful gift, $150,000 challenge grant from the Bradley Turner Foundation. That was really quite an eye-opener for us, it was a one-to-one challenge grant. We did not go to the corporate community, we did not go to large single donors to help us match that. Those were funds were matched in about four months with gifts from individuals of less than $1,000. People gave us $50, $100, $500 so that River Center could stay open and keep alive. And it was really humbling to see this reaction from our community and how our individuals responded. With our canceled shows, we gave the option to those who had tickets to keep them on account in our box office or contribute them back to the theater to help us going with the, with the recovery fund that we established. And many of our ticket holders just said, go ahead, we donate our money back to the theater so you can keep doing what you do. So the priority was to preserve River Center as a nonprofit corporation and maintain our responsibility to preserve and protect the River Center facility. We did attempt streaming, that did not work. It proved very quickly that people want to see live entertainment on stage. They want to get together as audiences, as a community, and enjoy the live entertainment and the exchange between the live performer and the audience. We did adapt our facility in the ways that we used our facility so that we could accommodate meetings that required social distancing. We had meetings with the Bar Association, the Lieutenant Governor came with the Chamber of Commerce and did a presentation. So we opened our doors to do that, and we looked for unique ways that we could use the facility where we could use our space to keep other entities in their meetings and to keep other mentity, entities able to conduct their work, even though we could not do our regular activities. I'm happy to say that our annual Gingerbread Village continued. We could socially distance in our lobby, that was a food drive for the show of School of Music students for their food pantry. We engaged also in a coat drive for the area homeless. And then we began to look at ways that we could use the facility in more creative ways. We hosted blood drives, we had conversations with the social service agencies about using River Center as an extreme weather shelter for the homeless. So we had a plan for that in place, which remains intact today. We offered River Center as a vaccination site. We tried to think in different ways to offer the facility so we could help the community through this and also keep River Center relevant in the Columbus community. We continued with our education programming, which was kind of difficult, kind of a difficult shift for us. We do a lot of live entertainment in the schools and entertainment in our facility for young people. We contracted with two theater organizations that adopted all of their work to be online. And we provided three, actually four, online youth education programs, not just to the schools, but we made them available to all homeschoolers. So anyone in Muskogee County and any of the contiguous counties, even into Alabama, could receive a free live stream over a period of three weeks each, where their kids at home could see the programs, access a study guide, and it was all connected to the curriculum in those school districts. So we were proud to be able to continue that. In February, as we, well, as we, as we worked our way through the, the, the COVID crisis, we have lifted our temperature checking at River Center now, mask wear has been lifted. However, as your meeting was going on, our staff is drafting a policy to reinstitute mask wear at River Center in light of the, the surges that we're seeing in the, in the transmission of COVID. We did see that our payroll protection program was, was forgiven. So that funding was forgiven and we will not have to pay that back. River Center did receive $150,000 in economic, in, in, in the, in idle loans, economic injury disaster loan. That $150,000 is payable back over 30 years with very favorable terms. And, and that's really a good thing, and we're happy that that occurred. However, that is the very first time since its inception that River Center has ever owed money. It's been a point of pride with our Board of Trustees, a point of pride with our staff, that we have never carried debt in our budget, and now we are. So our goal now is to pay that back as quickly as we possibly can. Some good things came out of it. We were fortunate that our friends at the Fox Theater in Atlanta had proceeded with a renovation of their lighting system. So they had four spotlights that were available to be given to another theater in the community, and we raised our hands and we took those. So we were able to upgrade our spotlighting capacity in the theater, which is a really big deal for Broadway tours. Everybody wants to have the brightest spotlight possible, so we're able to do that now. We took our spotlights that we had at River Center and we offered them to other theaters in the local community so they could use them in their facilities as well. So that little exchange happened. Also, you may have heard just recently, we received the donation of a wonderful theater organ for River Center. If you've ever been to the Fox Theater and you've sat in the, in the theater before a show and heard the beautiful theater organ play, well, you can have that experience now. a show and heard the beautiful theater organ play, well, you can have that experience now in the Bill Hurd Auditorium, and from time to time, we'll have the instrument there. We can move the instrument to the Studio Theater and do silent pictures, we can move the instrument to Legacy Hall, and that's a wonderful gift for River Center. Just a little look at what is upcoming. I'll go through it just really quickly. We just signed Dionne Warwick, and we will have our Theater Organ inaugural Concert in, in October. The President's Own Marine Band will be here for a free performance, Little River Band, and some other shows that have been rescheduled from the previous season. Our Gingerbread Village will be open. Martina McBride will be doing her Christmas concert, her Christmas tour. We're one of the stops for her with her Christmas tour. That'll be a wonderful weekend. We will have a free program with our organ concert in Legacy Hall in January and March. Our education program continues with the Coole Theater, doing Macbeth for high school audiences, and then a production of The Great Gatsby for a public audience. They'll be in residence at the theater for a week and a half, so we look forward to welcoming them. Academy of St. Martin in the Fields with the wonderful Joshua Bell will be appearing at River Center through an endowment that was created by Virginia Norman, so that effort will continue. We'll welcome the Blue Man Group, Hairspray for two performances, and we'll continue with programming into June. Just some things facing us as we move forward into the future. We have a staffing issue. We've heard that spoken about today a little bit, and it's, it's across the industry, so what we've done is we've worked to increase the salaries of our independent contractors to make working at River Center a little bit more attractive. In August, we will have a training program that will be open to River Center staff and other theater professionals in the community and across the region to be trained in specific skills in the theater that are required of shows that tour throughout the state. We'll be partnering with other theaters in the state of Georgia as well to work on that. So we're working to really beef up the, the labor force as best as we possibly can. And about the only thing that's a, a real fear for us in the future, even though it will take about, probably about 15 to 18 months for us to get back to where we were pre-COVID, is another shutdown of the industry. That's making everyone nervous right now because the industry cannot survive without the touring product and without the confidence of our audiences in the market to come and do the tours and work in our theaters. We still continue with the goal and the desire to pass legislation that will make the music theater touring production tax credit, something that we can use as an economic development tool. We have two projects working that we're working with right now for tour startups that that would be very useful for, so that'll be something we'll ask for in the legislative initiative. The last thing I want to do is thank Judy Thomas for her six years of service on the River Center Board. She's been just terrific to work with, and Gary Allen is not here today, but I was going to welcome Gary Allen onto the theater on the River Center Board of Trustees as well. Thank you all for your support, everything that you do for River Center. I hope that you will never hesitate to call on us if we can be service to you. So I'm happy to take any questions you have, if there are.
Counsel, we do have a few. Counselor Woodson, did you?
No.
Okay. Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the update. I'm sorry they didn't enjoy the live stream, and I like live theater, but I did participate, and I enjoyed sitting home with my wife watching those three shows.
That's great. I hope you take the opportunity to, to come out to the theater now.
I will, I will, I will. It was nice to have a choice.
I appreciate that you do that.
On the night that you couldn't be there, you still could be there, if you get me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cram?
When's Little River Band coming?
They are coming in March, I believe.
Ooh, my birthday. Okay. Thanks.
There you go.
Well, I, Norm, I tell you, fantastic leadership getting the facility through all this stuff, and to hit the ground running with all the great performances you've got lined up, I can't wait to show up and see folks in the theater. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're looking forward to it.
Well, intermission is over, so come on down, and I'd love it if you could do the ribbon cutting for the Gingerbread Village again this year, Mr. Mayor?
One of these days, I'm gonna take a bite of one of those houses, but yeah, I'll be happy to. I'm, I'm in. I'll be there.
Thank you all very much. I truly appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Mr. Mayor, next up, we've got Bev Dorsey. She's the CEO of Enrichment Services. She came to see us, and we had an opportunity, of course, you and, I think it was just the two of us, Mayor, that she came to see us and shared some information, and we asked her if she would come and do an update here at council, so thank you for being here.
Ms. Dorsey, thank you for your patience.
Well, Mayor, City Manager, and Council Members, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update to you. I know you've been here a long time, and you still have more items on the agenda, so we will make this update very brief for you. You should have received a folder that has information about enrichment services programs. So I want to just point out a few items in that folder, and then we also, during the meeting with the mayor and city manager, I shared information about the Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition. So we'd like to spend a little more time just talking about that, not too much, but to ensure that you all know about the Poverty Reduction Coalition. So in the folder that you have with enrichment services information, the first page, you'll notice our vision and our mission, and our mission is to eliminate poverty through education services and partnerships. You'll also notice our service area map. We serve 11 counties, 10 counties in Georgia, and then Russell County in Alabama, and then you'll also notice our core services that fit into four categories. So that's education, employment training, stabilization services, and family strengthening. And one of the stabilization programs that is not listed on this document right now, because it's coming, that is water assistance. So starting later this year, we'll be able to assist individuals with their water bill in addition to their energy bill as well. The next document dispels out all of the services that we offer here in Muskogee County, and on the back of that, you'll notice a list of our board members, and so we do have two individuals who have worked for the City of Columbus that serve in our board, so we do appreciate their service. So thank you, Mayor and City Manager, for that. The third document, I just want to spend a little time here. You'll notice it shows our impact in Columbus. So we had, during this 2019-2020 period, we had 185 employees here in Columbus, in Muskogee County. However, now, with our entire organization, we have about 500 employees, so that's across our 11-county area. During this particular period for early childhood, we expended $7,728,671, and that allowed us to serve... We're gonna get to that. Thank you. So that allowed us to serve 717 children from birth to five. For our Community Services Department, where we focus on employment training, where we partner with Feeding the Valley to distribute commodities and also distribute energy assistance, we were able to disperse $1,884,551, and you'll see the breakdown of the number of people we were able to serve. So it is our pleasure to be able to address the needs in the community. And one last thing that you'll see on this document is that during the 2019-2020 year, we were able to help 229 families move towards self-sufficiency, and five actually achieved self-sufficiency. And the way that we define self-sufficiency is a family's ability to take care of their basic needs without public or private assistance. So that's a great segue, because we now have a coalition in our community that is focusing on trying to reduce poverty. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Darcy Terrace, who facilitates the Poverty Reduction Coalition, and she's gonna give you a very brief update on what that coalition is.
Mayor, City Manager, and Council Members, thank you so much. Again, I will try to be brief, although those of you who know me know that that is a lot to ask. So I'm happy to present the Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition. Why we decided to build this coalition? Well, in 2017, enrichment services served as a super host for the on-the-table community discussions, and current ESP customers described that there were persistent barriers, access issues, for them to receive the resources that they needed in order to move their family out of poverty. Similarly, organizational stakeholders described that they felt that they were in silos and that there were barriers between integration of services. And this became a moment of energy, right? We have an opportunity here to transform how we provide services in this community so that we can make a significant impact on the poverty rate. Concurrently, Circles USA, and we have Barbara here from Open Door, the Columbus chapter of Circles, and CQIU, which is the firm that I represent, were developing a model called the Poverty Reduction Lab, and this was really an idea of shaking things up, being positively disruptive to the system, and looking at how we might integrate services better and adapt a culture of continuous quality improvement, which is really the gold standard when you go into industry, healthcare, and Jack Lockhart back there will also say, public health. And we wanted to work across sectors. The entire community needs to be involved in finding these solutions, and we wanted to be able to test and create the evidence base as to how we might best move families from where they are now to economic self-sufficiency. If we knew how to do that now, somebody would have been awarded a Nobel Prize for that, right? We need to take a systematic approach to figuring out what strategies work. So we got together, and I'm proud to say that Columbus was the first poverty reduction lab in the United States. Columbus, Circles USA has established these at other centers, but three years ago, this was the first one. We eventually switched to the name Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition because the Columbus Poverty Reduction Lab was more confusing, and we wanted to make sure that all constituents knew why we were here, and we wanted to be able to address the broader region. We were very lucky to receive funding from the Division of Family and Children's Services State of Health Program, which allowed us to initiate the PRC. Year two funding has, was provided through ESP's Community Services Block Grant, and we continue to look for resources to be able to fund the work that we do as a coalition as well as pilot projects. This is our mission, mission and vision. Now, if you haven't noticed, I'm an academic, so I like to make sure that I'm very specific in the words that I use. So our vision statement seems very complicated, but really it comes down to, we want to reduce the number of individuals who live in poverty currently by half in 10 years. And it's doable. We know that it's doable. We are basing this on 2018 statistics, and we are saying that moving a family out of poverty is based on 200% of federal poverty thresholds, which most experts, most experts are behind as being really the true sense of moving a family out of poverty. The poverty thresholds were set, I think, back in the 1940s and are quite out of date. Our mission is to do that by exploring high-impact strategies of integration across sectors and organizations, so that we can equip families with the resources that they need, we can promote economic equity, and we can promote continual improvement of opportunity across generations. This means we're looking at specifically two-gen approaches. So for reference, how many people live in poverty currently in your county? So in Muskogee County, the poverty rate of less than 100% is 20.7%, less than 200%. Again, the level where experts say you really have to cross to get to financial self-sufficiency, that rate is 42.2%. Or 79,670 individuals. In 2021, for a family of three, 100% of the federal poverty limit is only $21,960. Again, this is why we use that greater than 200%. What is perhaps more shocking is when we look at the poverty rate specifically among families with children less than five years of age. The poverty rate for children less than five years of age, again, only less than 100% of federal poverty, 100%. In Muskogee County is 30.9%. It is not reported for less than 200%, but you can imagine that that number likely doubles. What does that mean? Well, the annual food expense for a family of four is estimated to be $8,822, right? So you can imagine, again, if you have $21,000 as being the federal poverty limit, that's a third of their expenses would go towards food. One in five people in Muskogee County are food insecure. These are data really before the impact of the COVID pandemic has struck, and 8,429 households with children receive food stamps. If you look at what the minimum wage is in Georgia and the median wage in Muskogee County, we've got $15.12. The MIT Living Wage Calculator says, and you know, I bring this up because we've talked a lot about staffing shortages and wages tonight. The MIT Living Wage Calculator says that for Muskogee County, based on the expenses in Muskogee County, the living wage is $27.13. So who are we? Who are this, who are these, these fighters for reducing the poverty rate? I'd ask those of you in the audience who are still here from the coalition to please We have many more, but these are the ones who have been here all night waiting for me to ask them to stand.
Sorry.
No worries, but you can see their dedication. The work on the coalition is all volunteer, above and beyond the work that they do for their day-to-day jobs. So you can say, how are you going to reduce the poverty rate in 10 years? That seems awfully ambitious, right? Well, I think if we can solve the lawn waste problem, we can probably solve the poverty rate problem. It's going to be through coordination of organizations, right? We have a lot of resources, but there are gaps and redundancies. So if we start working as an integrated system, we can see how best to use those resources and call upon the strength of organizations and allow others to pick up slack in other areas. We want to work on this idea of a living wage and educating the public, starting with you here at City Council, but even the greater community, on what is a living wage in Columbus? What should employers be offering their employees? And then specifically through advocacy, I have to tell you, I've been here all night, and I shouldn't be nervous, but I am. Through advocacy, specifically to address something called the cliff effect. The cliff effect is when public supports, public benefits fall off faster than someone can add additional wage. So what happens? Let me go back. What happens? So say someone has a childcare credit, and so they're getting money towards childcare so that they can be in a quality-rated childcare setting while they work. Their boss says, you know what? You're doing a great job. I'm gonna raise your salary by 50 cents. As soon as that happens, it triggers a threshold where they lose 100% of that benefit, but they only earn a... they only earn a little bit more with the raise. So people decline promotions. They decline extra hours. They might be viewed as being lazy for doing so, but really what they're doing is saying the net benefit for my family is negative. We need to be able to change that at the state level. We need to be advocates for that. So what are our current priorities? We're a busy bunch. So we are working on a 10-year strategic plan to make sure we have a plan that we can follow to achieve our goals. We're looking to secure support and funding to establish a position, really an office that we have been informally calling the Poverty Czar, someone who wakes up every day and the first thing they think about is, how can I? I pushed the wrong button. There we go. How can I, how can I solve poverty in Muskogee County? There's no one who wakes up every day and says that that's their job. They would help coordinate between local and state initiatives, and they would also be able to lead and help grow the PRC. We're also working with the Division of Family and Children's Services in a joint case management system so that families that are referred to them, that are found to have unsubstantiated cases, are not just dropped, but issues related to poverty are addressed by the members of the CVPRC and ESP. We're also looking to integrate personal financial management coaching in that joint case management system so that every person who comes through that system gets long-term financial coaching, not just a six-week training program, but someone who works with them side by side to make sure that they're looking at longer-term goals. And we have just completed, I saw on the agenda approval of GIS mapping, I just finished some myself, looking at actually mapping what our current poverty reduction system looks like in Muskogee County and in the greater Chattahoochee Valley. We are developing an online community portal. Our families that we serve reported that it was difficult because they had transportation and childcare issues, and so moving from agency to agency to enroll in services was difficult. The online portal will be a single entry point in which families can enroll in services and organizations can manage those families across services. There is a neighborhood-focused job incubator being established in the Oakland Park community. So we're looking at those neighborhood-focused interventions as being one of the forefronts of how we work. We were also able to work with Ashbury United Methodist Church and Columbus Technical College in establishing a new GED program, and we're looking to establish this long-term financial coaching model in a transitional program where we have individuals who are leaving prison to go back to our community so that they can also have those financial skills and tools to be successful and prevent recidivism. This is my last slide, and then you can move on to the next agenda item. But I wanted to talk a little bit about what we've been able to accomplish. Mostly, it's been breaking down those walls between organizations and really coming together to work as a single entity. We've spent time gathering input and wanting to really hear the lived experiences of community members who are currently living in poverty. We want to make sure that the solutions that we identify are community-driven and that we take their preferences and priorities into account. We've expanded promotion of United Ways 211 system, which is a system that you can either text, call, look online to get information about what services are available in the community. We've leveraged new sources of funding to promote that. There's been some billboards. We've instituted cross-training, so all of our members have to be trained in the 211 system, and we're looking to disseminate that out through all of those organizations. And there's a 211 training video. If you'd like, we can make that available to you. Again, we've mentioned the GED program and the online portal. We also, in response to the COVID pandemic, created and disseminated a one-page resource checklist in English and in Spanish, just a one-page handout that someone who newly was experiencing resource constraints or financial hardship as a result of the COVID pandemic would have some idea of where to start to look for help. Because if you have not been living in poverty and suddenly find those, that hardship, it can be difficult to even know where to ask. And then finally, what I think is most dramatic is we really have broken down those walls, and we're working together as a system, an integrated team, working to achieve our vision and mission. Thank you for your time. Again, let me know if you want that 211 video webinar, and we hope that we will be coming back to you soon to announce that we've been able to secure the funding and establish the Poverty Czar position.
Well, Counselor Huff, hang on, let me get to you.
Are there any questions?
There are a few.
I'm right here, comment. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Would like that copy of the 211 webinar to
Absolutely.
To take a look at. And to Ms. Dorsey behind you, Director, my favorite, I always say she raised me, she said I raised her, but anyway. To you and your staff, everyone that's here tonight, they've worked with me over the years. I'm here since 2011, and she introduced me to 211, and I've worked with some people late in the evening, and the system works well. And a lot of good people out that a lot of our constituents don't understand, people in poverty all the time because things are going so well for them. But I've been out at night as simple as going to a Burger King, trying to catch it before it closed, when it used to be over on Winton Road, and a lady in there with two kids because she forgot to pay the power bill. And it was cold outside, it was too cold to stay in the house, so we had to find a place to go and scramble, and someone took her in until the next day, and then due to all the different rules you all have spoken about tonight that they live under, I had to go personally and pay her power bill the next day or she was going to get put out because that was one of the rules, you could never have your power cut off. So I understand, I understand. So send me that, and I'll be glad to work with you. I started, believe it or not, in a seminar 2010, running for office, about reducing poverty in 10 years. So I'm all ears.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be talking about our membership for 2022 soon, so.
Counselor Woodson?
I would say that one of the benefits of going to 211 is that you might have been able to find resources for that family outside of your own generosity.
Well, I just want to say to Ms. Dorothy and to yourself, thank you very much for the presentation. I was here when 211 started, and it has come a long way. At that time, it was just a concept, and now it's a reality. I have used it several times to with constituents and constantly selling it because I think it's a world of resource. But again, it does have a lot of restrictions, so I'm glad that you're bringing this program. I like to see the webinar for 211 because, just as Counselor Huff states, we all get those phone calls. We see those people, those individuals out there, and we all do whatever we can. But 211 is an excellent, you know, resource, but sometimes it has its limitation. So it's really great if we're educated on the limitations so that when we recommend people or we use the service, we know in advance, okay, that they cannot do and this they can do for them. So I'm very interested in it also. And thank you for doing it in Spanish. Very little agencies do that. I like to get a copy of it in Spanish so I can spread it out.
We can send that to you as well. It's on, it's on one page, one side is English, one side
Perfect.
Is in Spanish. I would like to say that the online portal eventually will link to the 211 data, so someone who enters their information into the enrollment form will automatically get a list of services that they're eligible for. And second, not all organizations in our community elect to be included in 211. There's some fear that by being included in 211, that they might get swamped with people requesting services. Really, that is our central location of data, so I would ask you, as you talk to representatives in your districts, to please encourage them to be represented in 211.
Thank you. And thank you for all y'all doing.
Thank you for the presentation, and if you get the city manager a copy of that, of the webinar, we'll see if there's a possibility of airing it and re-airing it on our CCGTV. Because I think the education, not just for those that need the service, in fact, I think it's more important at the general public, because there's a lot of people that want to help, and they don't know even where to send people for those resources.
May I request, we also have an overview video of the Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition.
Sure, sure.
And it would be great if that could be also aired on the TV.
Yeah, and I want to thank the individuals that are, that are here. I mean, you sat through a lot of government to get to this presentation, and I see Mr. Steele out there, and I know he is passionate about his new role, and we just appreciate so much what you're doing. This is a key focus. I mean, nothing else gets fixed in the community if we don't begin to move the needle on poverty, because there's so many buckets that pour into and draw out of that one large tub. So thank y'all for what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Garrett.
I was just going to ask for a copy of the presentation. That was a great presentation. I'm with Morgan &amp; Morgan, and John Morgan has been a huge advocate of raising the minimum wage, and I'd love to use this presentation for statewide legislation.
Yeah, absolutely. And in fact, I'll add a slide that specifically describes the impact of cliff effects.
Okay, thank you.
If you get that to the clerk, she can distribute it.
And so Tiaja Johnson, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, she can distribute it to all the councils. I think we'd all have a copy.
Yeah, I can give it to the city manager.
Yeah, video, whatever, she'll get your information.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, wait, hang on.
City Manager, I have a question for you. They said that they're trying to advocate, you know, to the state. Is it possible we can put that on our agenda? A legislated agenda?
We can check with them and see what they're doing, what they're advocating, exactly. And then we can bring it, and you can determine whether it's something we want to add to our agenda or not.
Okay, just remind us when you bring it back, you know, because we have so much going on. But I think if they need help advocating for something that's happened to all our constituents, and there are people that are afraid to call 211 because they're embarrassed or something and don't know what to do. So it's great to get all that information.
Well, Tiaja's getting her information.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, yes. And so, Mayor, I've got Commissioner Huff listed, but I see that Deputy Commissioner David Britt is here, and I'm going to ask them to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Britt. I am the Chief Deputy Tax Commissioner, and here is Mr. Ty Whittaker. He is the Deputy Tax Commissioner over motor vehicle. Now, I have two sets of good news. One is that I only have three slides, so I'm going to be very brief. And the other is great news for anyone who does not like standing in line for tag renewals. We've been working hard on it, and we have kiosks coming to the city. These are going to be tag renewal kiosks. Look how quiet it got when I said you don't have to wait in line. These are going to be tag renewal kiosks. They are being built as we speak. We expect them to arrive by the third week of August or so. They will be located in Publix locations here on Macon Road and also on Bradley Park. Now, these are just tag renewal kiosks, and just to clarify, when we talk tag renewals, we're talking you getting that little sticker that you need for your registration every year as your, for your birthday. Now, you can still renew online, you can still renew in person, but we're all here because we care about our citizens. We don't want you waiting in line if you don't have to, so this is going to be a great service. You can renew your tags seven days a week at any of these two Publix locations. Now, to get the word out, we're going to, we're doing this, we're going to be on CCGTV on Thursday, and we, any help that we can get to spread the word out to our citizens, we would definitely appreciate it. We do have a brief clip of how the machine works, it's just a quick, easy, pay as you go.
Renew your vehicle registration and sticker without a trip to the county tag office. With convenient grocery store locations, Georgia MV Express kiosks let you scan, pay, print, and walk away with your renewed tag today. For more information and to find your kiosk, visit GAMVexpress.com.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And it's just that simple. Even if you don't have the scan slip, you can manually put the stuff on the screen, get your tag just as quick as you saw on the computer. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions. Again, you can renew and print instantly. It allows for debit and credit card payment, no cash, just credit and debit cards. Again, it will be at two locations, Publix on Macon Road and Publix on Bradley Park. Their hours of operation Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Again, we're planning for mid to late August launch, and watch us on CCGTV. And again, any opportunities we can to help get this word out, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
David, that's outstanding, and please thank the commissioner. This is very innovative, and appreciate what y'all are doing to try to make things a little easier for the citizens. Counselor Huff?
Thank you, sir, Deputy Director. I appreciate you. Is there something you can send us that we can put on our Facebook pages and things?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's in route.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Mayor, the final presentation is American Rescue Plan update. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, it's more than three slides, but I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can. A lot of this is information that you've heard before, and so I'll go through that relatively quick. Again, the American Rescue Plan was part of an act passed into law in March of '21, and it was 1.9 trillion in economic relief due to the pandemic, 362 billion in direct aid to states and local governments. The use of funds is in four major categories: response to public health, response to workers performing essential work, revenue replacement, as well as investment in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The city qualifies as a city and a county, so our allocation for the city was over $40 million. As a county, $38 million, for a total of $78 million. We have received the first allocation, which is half of the county and half of the city, $20 million on our city allocation received on June 7th, and $19 million of the county allocation received on June 14th, for a total of $39,241,019. We anticipate the balance of those funds to be distributed in 12 months. So again, we are operating under still the interim final rule that was released on May 17th. The open comment period was through July 16th. They still have not released the final rule. I will say that there is a frequently asked questions that originally started out as 18 pages. It is now 42 pages of frequently asked questions that have been submitted to the Treasury. So this is, every week or two, we get additional responses to questions that have been raised to them. So we are following that every day and waiting on that final rule. Again, the eligible costs are from March 3rd of 2021 through December 31st of '24, allowing us to expend the funds by December 31st of 2026. And there is financial reporting that will be required throughout this entire period of time. We did ask departments to submit requests to us, 300 We did ask departments to submit requests to us. 332 requests totaling $108 million. So we did review those requests based on that interim final rule, determined that some were, we felt, met the qualifications. Some, we were waiting on the final rule to determine the eligibility. And some, we did not meet what was in the interim final rule, so we don't anticipate that to be added, or they have been already funded in other ways. We did determine, the finance director went through the calculation for revenue recovery. It's based on the total city revenues, not individual revenue sources. And our revenue recovery that we can apply to the ARP funding is 3.5 million. These are just some of the requests that we received from departments that ranged in all types of different areas for the operations of city departments. What we're here tonight is to really talk about what we feel are the funding priorities for this first phase of funding. And I'll go through each one of these. I do want to spend a little bit of time on the small grant program. We've talked about that a lot, so I want to talk about that specifically. But the priority would be the automation of garbage collection to include garbage trucks and carts at 19.5 million. The revenue, revenue recovery at 3.5 million. Expansion of our small business grant program, 3 million. Ambulances, 2.1 million. Community safeguard programs to include Cure Violence and Cameras, 1 million. Broadband cybersecurity upgrades, and this will be phase one of this project, at 3 million. Premium pay of, for public safety and other essential employees at 5 million. And stormwater infrastructure at just over 2 million. And that would be our recommendation for the funding priorities of the 39 million that we currently have in the bank. And just to talk a little bit about the small grant program and what we're looking at as an expansion of that program. Community reinvestment through their CDBG CV funding, partnered with Startup Columbus and the Chamber of Commerce. They allocated $112,000 for grants, up to $4,000 for small businesses that would be from 1 to 25 employees. It was for assistance with their rent, utilities, payroll. And it, and it required that they continue employment for those low to mod income individuals. So this was a list of some of the requirements that those businesses had to meet to qualify for this funding, including to have a business license in the city of Columbus, be in good standing, current on your taxes, have a physical presence in Columbus, be in business since January 1 of 2020, and be able to retain or create jobs for those individuals. These are the businesses that have been awarded to date, $4,000 each. And there are a wide variety of different types of businesses, from healthcare to salons, to restaurants. And so a wide variety of individuals have taken advantage of this program, submitted the application, submitted all the documentation that's required, and have been awarded the $4,000. So, um, yes, ma'am? So again, these are small businesses that would be from 1 to 25 employees that have met their criteria outlined through the CDBG CV program. They also would be required to meet HUD requirements, as that is the agency that oversees any CDBG allocation. And so all of these businesses have met those requirements and have been awarded the $4,000 grant.
Out of 112,000?
Out of 112,000. We still have six more, uh, grants, and so they're working through. We had over 200 applications, and these are the ones who have so far met the requirements. And they're trying to work through and get six more to meet the 112,000.
So with the 3 million that's in that priority list of projects, you, we'd continue this program?
We'd continue this program. We would, um, are looking at recommending maybe a higher amount as opposed to 4,000. Looking at a higher amount to get more interest. I think some individuals felt, and businesses felt, it was a lot of work for $4,000. So we want to make it maybe 10,000. We're still putting that program together for council's authorization. So we have scheduled two public meetings, August the 2nd and August the 4th, right here in city council chambers, from 5:30 to 7:00, to get input from our citizens on the priority list that we have recommended, and get their input and comments back on that priority list for the allocation of the ARP funding. So our timeline is to have the public meetings next week. We'll come back to council on August the 10th, give you an update on what we heard at those public meetings. And then we would be coming back on August the 24th, based on your direction at the August 10th meeting, requesting your approval for authorization to move forward with those priorities. Of course, that is pending receipt of that final rule from the U.S. Treasury. We want to be very cautious that we don't jump out ahead of that final rule, because we would be required to reimburse any funds that don't meet the requirement. So we want to be cautious as we move forward with this program.
And so, Mayor and Council, let me just say that we realize that's not your priority list. It's a, a priority list coming forward to council for consideration as recommendation from staff based on all of the work that they have done, we have done. And so the public meetings would be to say to the public, this is the priority list that staff has presented to council for consideration. Tell us what you think about this priority list. Tell us what shouldn't be on it, or should be on it, or what do you think, so that when we come back to you, we will be able to report back what we heard from the public based on this priority list. And then we figure council can deliberate, debate, you know, create your own list, do whatever. But we're gonna start the conversation and have public meetings and report back to you. And then this would be the timeline. That's what we wanted to share with you today.
Okay.
And we'll answer any questions, Mayor, if there are questions.
Counselor Tucker?
Thank you for the update. I, I did have two questions. Where it says the Cure Violence and the Cameras, the 1 million dollars. Would we not fund Cure Violence through the OLOS if we do it through here?
Well, right.
So we'll fund it through the ARP?
It's only gonna be funded one way or the other.
Yeah, okay. I was, I was asking. I think that's a good option to do it through the ARP. And then, can you tell me who, who falls under essential employees?
There is a lengthy definition in the ARP documentation. So it lists essential employees and gives a long definition. That program will come back to council with our recommendation on how to, who would fall under those categories and why.
Yeah.
And what the allocation recommended would be. So that will come back to you for final consideration.
Yeah, we, of course, we have interim final rules. We're waiting on final rules. And we're gonna, we know public safety.
Right, right.
And then it could be.
The bus drivers.
Bus drivers. It could be garbage drivers. It could be just.
Depends.
Yeah. And so we'll, we'll define.
The essential workers.
What we can, um, get consent or approval on from the federal government as essential employees.
Yeah, we, I think we, we consider all of our employees essential.
Absolutely.
We do.
The Treasury Department is gonna tell us, based on their perspective, what is an allowable essential employee.
Yeah, that's the reason why I ask, because, you know, we would love to give all our employees.
Yes.
You know, money.
Yes.
But I, I just wanted to know what the breakdown was for, um, the essential employees.
Yeah.
And Counselor, you asked a good question, I think, about the Cure Violence, because I, I don't even know if the city manager and I agree on this. But I would lean towards trying to use alternate funding for Cure Violence, because I think we're gonna really be able to invest in, a lot of money in the cameras. Cameras are gonna be what allows us to stop some of this illegal dumping. It's gonna help us catch some of these violent criminals quicker. And we can spend the money to go ahead and make them so they're actually mobile. You know, we can keep them in an area for a while and then move them to another area, as we examine the cost of them. And, uh, because, you know, we had talked about Cure Violence even before the ARP funding.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, and, and we're not.
I don't get to vote, but I can.
Well, we're not set on any, it's just, we, we gotta get this conversation going so that we can get this thing moving. And that's all we're, we're, we're trying to do.
The staff's doing a great job of getting a, a basis from which to begin that deliberation.
And, and I, I really feel good about the fact that, uh, there, there are small business grant opportunities. And, and the, and the amount, I mean, we only had 112,000 in it. And we're talking 3 million. And this is just the first round of ARP money. I mean, the first half, I should say, you know. So I, 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 I feel good about the priority order. But we'll see what the citizens think, and then come back to you. And then you may think totally different. So we'll see.
I, I, I do think that was great that you, um, you all added the small business grants for the 3 million. That's thank you, you know, for those, um, small business owners. Myself and Counselor House were at a neighborhood watch meeting, I can't remember when. It was probably like a couple of weeks ago. And, um, they were talking about the cameras.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, right. They was talking about the cameras and that. And it was different prices, different pricing, because they was really trying to push the neighborhoods to get the cameras. I think it was at a $2,000.
And get the flock of cameras, the retakes, and the, please, pardon me.
Yeah. Well, and, and we're coming with a comprehensive plan for cameras. I mean, we've, you know, um, we, we've, we bringing all the department parties together. And, you know, we just had the preliminary meeting yesterday. You, you may not know that, it, it blows your mind that, you know, Metro has 177 cameras.
197?
197. They're correcting me.
Cameras?
You know, I, so we're talking about interior, and then they have cameras out, extra, on bu, inside buses and outside buses. So when they're riding around and things happen, you know, I mean, that's a resource. So we, the Civic Center, all, you know, you saw the cameras in recent months with activity outside the Civic Center where people were identified. So, I, I mean, when we start looking from department to department to department, I mean, we're pulling all that together. And then we're gonna see where the gaps are and what we need to do and with parks, all of that. So I'm just throwing this out to say to you that we are taking a really comprehensive look.
They need to be compatible and durable.
That's right, Mayor.
Well, thank you all. Thank you. This is awesome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. Uh, Counselor, hang on. Counselor Thomas?
Before we go too much further, Mr. City Manager, you may, um, be able to correct me if this is wrong. But there are some folks that may be interested to know that tomorrow night, I believe it is, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Cunningham Center, is a public meeting to talk about the redistricting plan. And our, um, Representative Richard Smith is part of the legislative body that's going to be dealing with redistricting. So if there's anyone that's interested in redistricting, it's, the meeting is 5:00 to 7:00 tomorrow night at the Cunningham Center.
That, that is correct. It's, uh, Columbus Redistricting Public Hearing, Wednesday, 5:00 to 7:00, as you said, at the Cunningham Center. And, um, it says, um, but, but that's, that's, you're, you're exactly right. I got, just received a note a few minutes ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, item number one, so resolution, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Allen, from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve. Any, uh, comp, any, uh, discussion? Here and none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's approved.
Item two is a resolution.
Motion second, excuse Counselor Barnes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Approved.
Item number three is an email correspondence from Mr. John Jackson. He's the chairman of the Circle. He's advising that Sarah Ann Arcilia is resigning from her seat on this board.
Is there a motion to receive?
Counsel will receive with regrets.
All right. Motion from Counselor Woodson to receive with regrets. Is there a second? Second, Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? It's approved.
Item four, minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion received from Counselor House. Second, Counselor Woodson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Approved.
Next, we have board appointments. We have the mayor's appointments listed first. The Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners. The mayor is working on a nominee for this board. The Youth Advisory Council. Mr. Mayor, did you?
I do, and I just went blank on her last names. Victoria, she's a sixth grader at Blackman. Uh, Victoria, I will get it to you. I think we've sent the, uh, application out to her, so that should come in anyway.
Okay.
I'll get you the name. Sorry.
Do we want to just hold off on it?
Yeah, I better do that. Be 15 Victorias that can, that they've been appointed.
We will bring this back for the next meeting. Next, we have council district seat appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. We have council district three, five, seven, and eight. Counselor Garrett is going to be nominating for Mark McCullum's seat, Mr. Rex Brady, and he may be confirmed.
Confirmation moved by Counselor Garrett, seconded by Counselor Woodson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He is confirmed. Certainly.
Yes.
Does Keep Columbus, um, have any suggestions of anyone that they would like to see on the board? Could you check with them?
Yes, I did, uh, check with the Keep Columbus Beautiful Director, Counselor Woodson. And she has not submitted any recommendations. I will follow up with her on that.
Okay, thank you.
For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, the council district three seat is open for nomination. Youth Advisory Council have outlined districts one through eight and District 10. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, we have two seats that are open for nominations. And as I have mentioned previously, the new appointees must fall within the nine categories that have been listed and outlined. Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the at-large members, we have open for nominations. The seat of David Goldberg, Oz Roberts, Dr. William Kendall, Fran Flucker, Orlean Bachmann, and Larry Derby. For the tree board, we have two seats that are open for nominations. It's the residential development member as well as the educator member. Next, I have listed the upcoming board appointments. The Animal Control Advisory Board, Board of Honor, Columbus Ironworks Convention and Trade Center Authority, and the Uptown Facade Board. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I think Counselor Davis had a point of personal privilege. And before we do that, I did want to make, mention very, very quickly, we have a local resident that won gold, a gold medal in the Olympics. Amber English. She's in the military, and she's, actually lives in Phoenix City. But she, uh, yeah, she won gold in skeet shooting. And, uh, so I've already spoken with folk, representatives from Fort Benning. We did, we did. We had a man, and I couldn't remember his name, so I wasn't gonna try to. But, uh, but, but we've spoken to Fort Benning, and we're gonna try to put together a joint celebration. But we've spoken to Fort Benning, and we're going to try to put together a joint celebration with Fort Benning and probably bring in Russell County and Phoenix City as well, so get Mayor Lowe involved, and it'll be, you know, listen, ain't every day you win a gold medal, right? All right, and we've got an executive session coming next, but first, I think Counselor
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to ask council if they would approve to allow Ms. Johnson. She's been out there just patiently sitting, you know, young man, you got a council fan with you, right?
Motion second, approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Johnson, you can come forward. I'll start the timer when you give your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Angela Johnson, and I reside along with my husband at 6326 Cape Cod Drive, Columbus, Georgia. I am, you all have blown my speech totally out of the water, because everything I was going to say has already been said, but I will say this to you, I'm not going to tell you how long my trash been out there, and I think one of the remarks was, I'm just going to keep piling, I have to keep piling it because I don't have anywhere else to put it. I'm 63 years old, I am not going to get out there and try to take it, pile it back up in a vehicle to take it to a landfill, that's not an option for me. But I will say is that the citizens of Columbus are watching, and they are complaining. I made a post on Nextdoor out of desperation, and I have over 200 complaints and comments and likes that the city is not doing a good job, which I think you all know that. But the one thing I will say, and it was reminiscent of when I graduated from college and came back home to Columbus, the very reason many people leave here is because of lack of a livable wage, and it's been talked about all night. You all have got to get this right, you know. I'm, I mean, I know some of you people personally, Bruce, for instance, I used to live in Bruce's district, but I'm just begging you, get it right. Whatever you got to do, like Councilman Davis said, I don't know all the ins and outs, I've never worked in government, I was, worked in corporate America. Just please get it right, and do what's right for the citizens, and let's get this trash off of the street. I know you're working hard at it, but our city looks like a big, major dump. It's embarrassing. I'm embarrassed for someone to come to my house, because my whole curb, from one end to the other, is just lined up, I don't have anywhere else to put it. So when I go out there and dig and cut my bushes, and we, I have no choice but to take it out to the street and dump it out there till you guys make some arrangements to come get it. Thanks, be blessed, and I don't want any one of your jobs. You have a hard job ahead, but I hope that you all will get it right. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Well, sure, Bruce, you mind? Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Johnson, do me, thank you for being so patient, and I want to thank council for, I may, you know, I probably missed...
That's quite okay, we all do. I do it too.
The council was gracious in allowing you to do this, and it's my fault, I'll take the blame. And just do me a favor, your address that you gave, will you give it to the city manager or his deputy city manager, and just while you're here, and so they can make sure it's on the list for you? I know you've called many times, and, you know, while you're here, you can do, you can hand deliver.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And listen, for the record, I'm terribly sorry about the inconvenience that's created.
That's quite okay. I enjoyed the meeting.
We're going to get it, I just wish I could tell you when. Counselor Huff?
Yeah, I just had a question. Deputy City Manager, good one. The age limit on the youth advisory, what's the minimum age?
6212.
6212, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tucker.
Clerk, can you add me to approve the items that I missed? Thank you.
All right, Ms. City Attorney, we have a request for an executive session.
Yes, sir, on litigation.
On litigation. All right, is our motion to go into executive session? Motion second to go into executive session to discuss litigation. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, if we could clear the, clear the council chambers. All right, we are back in regular session. We went into an executive session to discuss potential litigation, and there were no votes taken. I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to call up two resolutions on negligence liability claims. The first resolution is to resolve all claims of Claimant John Reginald Lewis, injuries sustained in an accident on August 1, 2020. The city will make payment of $55,000 to settle all claims, including attorney's fees, of John Reginald Lewis. That resolution is ready for adoption.
Is there a motion? All right, motion from Counselor Crabbe, second from Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That's approved.
All right. We'll allow Counselor Garrett to leave. The second resolution is an injury that occurred in a, between a motorcycle, was this a motorcycle case? And a police car, the risk manager and our office should recommend a settlement of $110,000 to settle all claims of Derek Mays from an accident that occurred on July 25, 2019, and this resolution is ready for action.
All right, motion approved from Counselor Crabbe, second from Counselor Woodson. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, no. All right, that's approved.
And that's all we have, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, motion adjourned from Counselor Woodson, second from Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.
No, they're...